As a preliminary matter, I, the Chair of the Maynard School Committee, need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan cannot be with us tonight. She had a previous engagement and she apologizes for her absence. Lydia Clancy, yes. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Jeff Ferranti? I'll get back to you. Jennifer Gaudette?
Here.
Brian Haas?
Here.
Wayne White? Was Wayne coming tonight? I don't remember.
He's on, he's muted.
He's on, he's muted, okay.
There he goes.
I'm here.
Alrighty, now we just need Jeff Ferranti.
I know he was traveling on his way home, so he may be joining us a little bit later.
Okay, alright. Excellent. Anticipated speakers on the agenda. Megan Zamuto.
Megan, go ahead.
I'm here, thanks.
Oh, great, thank you.
Sure.
Well, no worries. Okay. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. The open, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a citizens' comment period. For this meeting, the Maynard School Committee is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Additionally, please let the Chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Please indicate in the meeting chat now if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. And I do not see anyone, so I'm going to keep going. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools District website under School Committee, Agendas, SC Agenda 202021. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that generate, helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy with other members, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. I paused because I couldn't remember if we were having any votes to make. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during this meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments4, that's numeral four, capital S, capital C, meeting, no spaces. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. So we're going to do citizens' comments before the presentation. And then during the presentation, people can start entering questions and comments into the chat and we will respond directly to those, so I don't have to keep checking my email during the presentation. Your email must include your first and last name and home address in order for it to be read. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone who wishes to has the opportunity to be heard. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, it is suggested that you limit it to approximately 350 words. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted for public record in its entirely regardless, entirety regardless. The Chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comment for the public record by providing copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the citizens' comments agenda item is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, its structure primarily supports unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. For this meeting, the school committee will be allowing attendees to comment in the chat function. In order to have your comment or question read and responded to, you must include your name and street address for the record. Any text entered into the chat will be captured and saved for the record. Chat comments will only be considered during the school reopening plan presentation. The school committee will accommodate questions and discussion for the time allotted to the reopening plan presentation. At the Chair's discretion, that time may be extended. Alright, and now I'm going to open the meeting. I will accept a motion to open the meeting. Do we need to do a motion or do I just say via roll call? Via roll call, alright, opening the meeting via roll call. Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
And Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. So the first order of business is the approval of prior meeting minutes. We have three sets of meeting minutes. And if there is no objection, I would like to hear a motion to approve all three sets.
I think you can just, without, without objection as a consent, you can just approve them and we can, I think, move on. I think it can be a consent.
So without objection? Yes, Mary?
I'll just be sending a note to Colleen because when I just read them, everybody's having a really hard time with my name.
Oh, well, so maybe we need to amend them.
Yes, so without objection, I would like to approve all three meeting minutes with edits, minor grammatical edits.
Yep.
Okay. Do we need to vote or we're good? Good to go, excellent. So now our first order of business, school calendar, start of school revision. Brian, do you want to?
So given the reopening of school and what that potentially looks like this year, the Commissioner of Education has changed the required number of days of school for students this year from 180 to 170 and suggested slash recommended that districts do professional development at the beginning of the school year prior to students starting in relation to COVID. And so that's professional development for instruction, professional development for health and safety. So the recommendation is to have students' first day now be September 14th, which gives us those days at the front of the school year to do the professional development. And given our adjusted schedule, we would make Wednesdays. If you look at the calendar, the professional development days, so where you, we used to have in the prior version, lots of early release days sort of spread out over the course of the year for some for the district, some for each individual building. We've now incorporated those into the Wednesday's timeframes. So if you see that, I think the calendar's clean. It has students starting on the 14th. It has our last day pre-snow, 170th day being June 10th. Five snow days would make it June 17th. So I would ask that you accept that, accept those revisions for a new calendar based on our remote learning options. Yes?
Mary?
Oh, so I just had a question about the staggered start beginning on September 14th. Brian, can you explain what that is all about?
So our intent is to, assuming we're going back like here right now at a hybrid model, we would anticipate having transition grades start first. And don't quote me on this exactly, but having, you know, maybe grades four and grades nine go in on the first day to get a sense of the building and then have other grades after that. So we're not bringing everybody back, even in the hybrid model, on the same day. That could be having some of our at-risk kids or some of the kids we think that have had significant trauma over the last several months be able to come in a little bit slower.
Great, I like that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Natasha?
Just to pick up where Mary was talking about the staggered start day for September 14th. Does, so are we thinking also that that would prioritize special education students potentially? If that were the case for hybrid or whatever we decide?
So during, so I'm not saying necessarily that it will all happen on the 14th, but during that first week of school, we would bring smaller groups of students in, including at-risk students, which are special education students as well.
Okay, okay, because I heard you talk about the fourth grader, like smaller groups. I just want to make sure that the special ed students are also considered more of the priority to start that transition back, great. And then I had one more question about the Wednesdays. It looks like, so every Wednesday through the whole academic year, you're saying is professional development, and so?
Well, I may have over-exaggerated, a piece of every Wednesday.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm trying to understand, so, because that's assuming that we don't go back on, to school on-site, right? At some point. And so I'm just trying to understand how that you're thinking, you know, that would work if we are eventually able to go back to school on-site or on Wednesdays?
I like your thinking, so if in fact?
I'd be optimistic that we get a vaccine and, you know?
It goes away.
You know, the possibility could exist, right?
I love that we can come back like normal, no masks, right next to each other. I would then present to you a revised calendar based on the elimination of COVID-19.
Okay, so this calendar is in consideration of a COVID schooling environment. We would expect to revisit something in the event. We've gotten to a very healthy place at some point that we would need to look at Wednesdays again.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Mary?
And it's just a thought, Brian and Jen, I guess, for future reference for down the road. But with that professional development day on Wednesday, I know I had asked at the last meeting, how, you know, what you, how it was going to look. Is it going to be some in-person, is it going to be some online? So for a future meeting, if we could do that, that'd be great, just to get a sense of what that's going to look like.
So I can address sort of where it will be rather than what it will be. But one of the things that the custodial staff have asked when we've met with the Facilities Department is that if we are asking for the sanitization in between the cohorts, which was the purpose of the Wednesday, is that we have as few, if anyone, in the buildings as possible. And so we would be looking to prioritize remote for whether it be instruction or professional development on that day.
How about at the beginning, those 10 days at the beginning? Could we have some of that in-person?
Yeah, that'll be a mix, but on those Wednesdays specifically, the reason it's on Wednesday is so that the buildings are empty, the custodial staff can go in, sanitize all of the components and we're, and again, that was if we're in the hybrid model between the two different cohorts.
Yep, thank you, I wasn't clear enough, I meant the 10 days before, so thank you, Jen.
Yeah, we're still working on, with our teachers on those pieces.
And I did have one more question about the Wednesdays again, thinking that they are remote learning and teacher development. Normally, like a professional development day, like when they, again, pre-COVID, on a Friday would be like a half-day. So are you envisioning that the teachers would be available for the first part of the day, but then doing professional development in the second part of the day? Or is it, could it be mixed? I didn't know if there was standard scheduling that I'm thinking that my parents might be, you know, it might be helpful for parents to be aware of.
I think to your point, in a normal year, it would be a half-day and it would be kind of, we would limit the amount of PD and have half a day of academics. Given this model and what we just don't know yet, I would reserve Wednesday for really teachers to do curriculum work and professional development at the beginning of the year and then let buildings work out, is there time in that day to do some outreach to students? Or do we really need that full day for teacher development? And I feel like we may need that day for teacher development in the beginning of the year.
Okay, and just another, just want to make sure, ask question. So we are, so taking all of those, because those are not instruction days, right? Those are not counted as instruction, learning days, so?
Those are, we are counting those as instructional learning days. So there will be remote, remote learning that is occurring. And what we are looking at in terms of that is providing, and again, we don't have the specific details of this worked out, but having different sessions that are happening, whether it be special education services or small group sessions, Title I services. We're looking at having paraprofessionals and other staff that can run sessions during those days. So the expectation is that students are engaged in learning on Wednesdays. It will be structured remotely by the teachers. And then in terms of in-person or direct service, that'll be done in more of a small group fashion to be able to meet the different needs of the students.
Okay, so they're counting towards the 170.
When would that staff who's teaching on Wednesdays get their PD?
So that's part of what we are working out. And again, the, having the flexibility of the entire day rather than having the, you know, the half-day in the morning is going to allow us to identify the blocks of time where we can have the vertical meetings that we need to have to ensure consistency, the horizontal meetings across grade level, that we can have consultation, consultation meetings between special education and regular education teachers, EL teachers, et cetera. But then also build in service time for students. And so it's going to be a mix of different components that are happening on that day for that to occur. So the concept wouldn't be that any given staff member is engaged in a single activity for the entire six hours of the day. It would be a variety of activities that are taking place depending on the needs of that teacher, the students, and the teams.
Alright, I am. So how many PD days do we have prior to school starting? It looks like we have nine. No, we've got 10. Okay. Someone, someone just commented and told me that there are only eight PD days prior to starting, but we have 10.
Well, we have Labor Day. I don't know if that's noted on the calendar, which is, I think, September 8th, and it might be noted for the 7th. So I think that might be, we need, probably need to look at that. I think that's a good point. September 7th is actually a holiday.
Right. And the, so that Friday before the 4th and then the Monday, the 7th, those aren't?
Do we need to update the, yeah, we need to update something there.
So the 4th and the 7th, are those holidays?
Yes.
Okay, so we technically only have eight days of teacher PD prior to the opening of school.
There's a little side, the little legend on the side says one to three professional days, no school, but there's still, so one to three is still teaching, like that's when the teachers will be, or PD days, right? But then that Friday and Monday are our holiday, right?
It says no school, correct.
No school.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Got it. Excellent. Any other questions or discussion prior to?
I wonder if you can just take out the no school on September 4th on the side? Because the students wouldn't be coming back that, at that point anyway. Is that, would that make it a little bit less confusing? And just be one through four professional days?
PD is coming on the 4th. The 4th is not a school day for?
Yeah, they aren't having professional?
Oh, for not, so not for staff and for students? Or yes for staff and no for students?
No for both.
No for both. So that's a holiday then?
Correct. Colleen, did you want to say four? Yes, yeah.
I was saying it was a four-day weekend for all staff.
A four-day weekend, okay.
Another way to say it, I like that, that's pretty positive, a four-day weekend. They will have earned it.
Got it.
Okay, are we good? So I will accept a motion to approve the amended calendar.
Um, I will make a motion, oh, I think she?
Jessica!
Sorry, do you make a motion?
Make a motion!
I make a motion to accept the revised calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. Mary Branley and, roll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. So that is the first order of business down. Now, we are going to go into citizens' comments. I am going to start reading those. The first one I'm going to read arrived last week and I didn't see it. So I promised her that I would read it tonight and I'm going to do that now. And I had it here and then it went away. Okay. So the first comment is from Heather Monero. Heather Monero from? Oh, doesn't say her address. I know she lives in Maynard.
She lives on Mark's Way, I don't know the number, but?
Oh, there we go, Mark's Way, yeah, I know.
I think.
Right behind.
Sorry, Heather, I added you.
Okay. "Good evening, my question is for parents of children who are high-risk, who do not feel comfortable with sending their child back either full return or hybrid return and instead opt for a full remote model. They have already been assigned teachers and schedules for the upcoming year. Will this change if they opt for full remote option? In other words, will there be teachers who by grade are just teaching fully remote? How will it work for those full remote students to keep up with their classes at the same level if they are not there every day? It seems as though these childrens will, children will possibly get the short end of the stick at no fault of their own. How will you ensure that these children are getting the same education as the children who are in school? Also, the Zoom meetings or remote classes with 23-plus children in the spring was chaotic and I felt that students did not feel as though they could or wanted to ask questions or feel comfortable requesting help for further instruction. Is there a possibility to break up the classes into smaller groups of students around the same education level as each other? So the instruction would be more beneficial for the students." And that will be addressed in the presentation? Brian, yes?
Yep, I can address it now or in the presentation.
Why don't we save it for the presentation? I'll just read all the comments and if you want to make notes and then, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or would you rather just do it now? Okay. The second one comes from Lynn Mohney of, and I don't have an address for her either.
And that one I don't know.
And I know who she is, but I don't know where she lives. So Lynn, if you're out there, resend it with your address, please.
How do you spell her last name?
M-O-H-N-E-Y.
I was going to Google it, but I, that's kind of creepy, but what's going on?
I'm just in public records, so.
Yeah, that's what I was. It is public records for most.
It's not coming up anyway, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna, I didn't want to, yeah, anyway.
Or if she's here, she can actually put a little note.
Maybe she can chat it, yeah, if you're here, maybe put it in the chat.
Alright. So this one I'm confused about because it was sent to the comments, but it was also sent to all of us. So I don't know if it was meant for comments.
Lydia, is that?
Yeah.
Is that the one I reached out to that had a lot of questions?
Yeah.
If that was just questions to?
Okay, so she didn't mean for it to be read? Okay, good, alrighty. Um, the next one comes from Diane DeShellis. And there is no address again. So I cannot read that. Diane, if you are out there, please type in your address in the comments so I can read your email.
Okay, because there's something, it's so interesting because some people put their address, but then they didn't put citizens' comment. And then you have the opposite in some cases, right? Some people put citizens' comment, they didn't put their address, it's hard to tell.
Here's a good one. Lindsay, I'm going to ruin this name, Toshes, I hope. "My name is Lindsay Toshes and I live at 11 Lincoln Street, Maynard. And I would like to begin with a request to the school committee to allow non-resident educators to be allowed to speak during public comment. Their voices are crucial to understanding the needs of your school system. Open the floor to them. Sending teachers, students, and staff back into the building to begin the school year will create an unsafe workplace and learning environment. As a public school educator in the Somerville School System, I can tell you that there is nothing more that I would like than to return to my classroom and see my students in the fall. I am sure the Maynard educators would say the same. However, by sending educators and students back to school, you are devaluing and endangering their lives and endangering the population of Maynard, especially our most vulnerable families. On Tuesday, August 6th, the city of Somerville announced that it would begin the 2020-21 school year remotely. In a statement to staff, the mayor, superintendent, and school committee stated that they recognize that health and safety is the top priority for the school community and without proper ventilation in all buildings and a robust testing system in place, schools cannot open for in-person learning. Everyone wants kids back in school, but only when it is safe. While I fully understand that Maynard in no way compares to Somerville in terms of demographics, size, and economic resources, one thing is exactly the same, humanity. If there is one illness, or worse, one death among staff, students, or families due to the virus, it will be too many. Across the state and country, the number of COVID-19 cases is rising. In schools that have returned with in-person learning, there have been positive cases as soon as the first day of school. Was it worth it? Absolutely not. It is for this reason that I urge you today to make the safest decision for our town and to make it sooner rather than later. In making this decision now, you will provide your educators with an invaluable resource, time, so that our educators can plan for the most robust, remote learning experience possible for their students. The educators of Maynard deserve this opportunity for success. Remember, the decision you will make will have a long-term effects on the health and well-being of this community. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay. And then the next one is Jennifer Wayne of 2 DeMar Street. "Thank you to the school committee and the task force for the time they have invested shaping this coming school year. My comments are made as a parent of a student at Fowler and a student at MHS. I'm also an early elementary teacher that works with at-risk students in a nearby district. The fact that the meeting to decide whether or not to open schools is being held remotely is an indicator that it is not safe to implement a hybrid model and that remote learning is our safest option. I am disturbed by the frequency at which I hear the repeated expression. When we have to go remote this year, we should start remotely and flip that tagline too." we should start remotely and flip that tagline to when we are able to go back to school. My feelings about remote learning are that it can be challenging and unpleasant. Yet, again, I say that as someone that facilitated remote learning for my own children and I was heavily involved in planning and implementing remote learning for over 200 first graders, some on IEPs. I have no doubt that all safety protocols have been painstakingly considered, but we have no control over what students, families, faculty and staff do when they leave an MPS building. There is a spectrum of comfort levels regarding the behaviors and associated risks of human interaction. One positive COVID-19 case can yield devastating outcomes. Thank you, Jennifer Wayne. Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Kevin Stone. And we all know Kevin, but Kevin, you didn't put your address in here. Kevin, if you're there, please text us and tell us what your address is. So do I have other people?
I found I found one address.
Okay, so I've got Diane. Diane DeShellis is 43 Mill Street. Dear Maynard Public School Committee and Superintendent Haas, my name is Diane DeShellis. I am a Maynard parent of two boys. My oldest will be starting fourth grade at Fowler and my youngest will be in kindergarten at Green Meadow. I'm also a special education teacher in Lexington and my husband is a guidance counselor in Bedford. I am writing to let you know my concerns about the upcoming school year due to COVID-19. COVID remote learning in the spring was difficult as an educator and a parent. In June, I was glad it was over and I was hopeful for the fall. I was even excited to hear about the hybrid model as it seemed like a compromise between full in-person and remote. However, I can see that it is less than a compromise. I was on the committee to plan Lexington's middle school, hybrid and remote learning schedules. Throughout the scheduling process, I kept asking myself, what are the trade-offs of being in person right now? COVID hybrid learning is not the same as hybrid learning. Hybrid learning blends traditional schooling with an online component. In COVID hybrid learning, students will not be able to interact in groups due to social distancing requirements. Instead, group work will be in front of a computer, which lacks the substance of genuine interaction. Moreover, while students will be with their cohort the majority of the day, they will not be with their friends at lunchtime or enjoying enjoying the normal social interactions that the school community would typically offer. These interactions are also an important ingredient in schooling. Indeed, what is proposed elevates the veneer of traditional education, but in reality, effectively sacrifices the substance of it. Given this, is it really worth risking the lives of teachers and students for only eight hours of so-called in-person learning a week? While on the committee, this committee, it was also evident that we did not have the necessary people present. And I think when she says this committee, I think she means Lexington, but don't quote me. Where were the doctors, nurses, infectious disease experts or the board of health members? We asked questions that required expert answers. We made our best guesses on the following types of questions. How many class-to-class transitions are safe? How many mask breaks should we provide throughout the day? Does it matter if you see 75 students a day or 75 students a week? Parents, Superintendent Haas and the Maynard School Committee, should we really be guessing when our children and teachers' lives are at stake? At this point, we can already see that our numbers in Massachusetts are rising. We know that we will have to quarantine and shut down the schools at some point. Let teachers and parents prepare for the fall now. Let teachers prepare a real remote learning plan instead of an emergency one. Stop planning a hybrid model that only provides a fraction of the instructional opportunities and start planning a stronger and more interactive remote plan. We can all agree that remote learning does not compare to in-person learning. But this is learning in the age of COVID. We have to accept that. Maynard is a town of working-class families and I understand the concerns about childcare as a parent. However, this virus has no limits. We need to protect our children and we need to protect and we need our community leaders to do the same. No matter what the outcome, I would encourage everyone to email or call our state and federal legislators to fight for working families during this time. This is no time to be divisive. Parents and teachers need to work together so that we can best support our children through this historic crisis. I support a full remote plan. Thank you for your time, Diane DeShellis. Thank you, Diane. All right.
We do have Kevin Stone at 17 Rice Road.
Excellent. Kevin Stone, 17 Rice Road. So many of you know me for raising the alarm regarding the state of Green Meadow Roof in a school committee meeting. I am now raising the alarm again. More than anything, I want our kids to have the educational experience that can only be a comment accomplished in a full in-person setting. I don't think I am the only parent that's going absolutely nuts trying to balance work with the kids in the house all the time. But the data and the models I trust, including those by the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation used by federal agencies, suggest that this is simply not going to be possible. The short summary of what the models are saying is that Massachusetts is now undergoing a slow but exponential growth in the number of COVID cases, to the point that in two to three months, we will have a number of infections comparable to the numbers we had this last March. This growth is not from a few bad apples or just a hotspot, but it has been continuously sustained sustained since mid-June. At that point, we will have no choice but to take the Maynard education system fully remote. My takeaway out of this is that pursuing a hybrid model at this time is going to set us up for a huge disruption come October or November for the kids and teachers in the hybrid system. Those kids and teachers with otherwise very little warning will have to switch models very quickly in the middle of the school year and we would be setting ourselves up for repeating the unsatisfactory remote experience we had this spring. Furthermore, in pursuing the hybrid model, we will be diverting much-needed resources for developing ahead of time the remote model that we all are most inevitably going to be using anyways. For these reasons, I urge the school committee to avoid repeating our unsatisfactory spring experience and commit as soon as possible to starting the school year with all students fully remote. And? No, 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 no. Um, Lynn Mooney.
We have 13 Lincoln Street for Lynn.
13 Lincoln Street. Okay.
I assume it's street.
Oh, wait, did I already read her?
No, she didn't have her address. She emailed back with her address.
Thank you for your time. This is not an easy time to be a parent. We have to make the impossible decision to send our kids to school during a global pandemic pandemic or face the possibility our children will not receive an adequate education. We are our daughter's only advocate in a sea of voices who do not understand her best interests like we do. She has an IEP with learning disabilities that made remote learning a nightmare. If we cannot figure out how to safely have in-person school now for our vulnerable children, it will likely be years before it is safe enough to provide them any successful education at all. My daughter deserves better than that. She is a bright, charming future third grader who has a lot to offer this world if she is given the opportunity to learn. Parents of children who need a remote option are having their needs met regardless of whether Maynard chooses to have a hybrid option. I implore you to think of children who will be left behind if they aren't even given a chance to try to enter the school building. The time to try is now. Cold and flu season will approach come winter and they could be forced back home for many months, where again, they will not be successful in school. They need to attend when they can or they will lose even more. There's a misconception that parents who want to send their kids to school believe kids can't catch the virus or think school will be normal. We don't. There's a risk and if we aren't careful, the results could be disastrous. The results of not going to school, however, will be equally devastating. There's also a misconception that no child can handle wearing a mask and maintaining distance. We have spent months teaching our daughter how to do just that and she's better at it than most of the adults shopping at Shaws. There is also perception we either aren't thinking of the teachers or we are somehow angry at them for the remote learning experience. Let me say right now, this is so far from the case. I am incredibly worried for their safety and I would hope our district will work hard to make certain teachers who cannot teach in person have adequate resources to be the best online teachers they can be. Maynard has the best teachers and they did the very best they could at a minute's notice. It isn't their fault some students aren't successful in remote model. No one carries that blame unless we continue to leave them behind. I know you don't have an easy decision before you. Thank you for hearing my words as you make your deliberations. Sincerely, Lynn Mahoney. Thank you, Lynn. Um.
Yeah, there was an email from Elizabeth Barron that I guess your email, not the the comment email. So I'm not sure procedurally what you want to do with that.
Yeah, no. Public comments, right?
She said it was a public comment and I put it in my citizen comment folder, so I just need to go there and get it. So, um, I actually have a couple that are in that folder. Where's? Elizabeth Barron, 27 Glendale Street. First of all, I would like to say thank you to the Maynard School Committee for your tireless dedication to our schools. I have confidence that between you, each and every angle of reopening schools is being considered here. My comment is this. If we choose to go full remote and spend the next 45 days really preparing for that, it would be the most productive use of time. I cannot imagine that any of you would be okay if the staff and children went back, even part-time, and then folks started to get sick. If that happens, you will be closing the schools, but at an expense that could have been that could have permanent repercussions. The truth of this virus right now is that one in 200 of infected people die of the virus and many people who recover can have lingering long-term effects that we do not understand at this point. I know that people want to get back to normal, but we are nowhere near that possibility. There are many who don't believe they should even be concerned about COVID-19. Many of us know otherwise. The only choice to make right now is to look at new ways of doing things. The old way is over. There are all there are alternative methods and they can be explored as we go forward. Right now, we need to not allow students and staff back to the buildings together. Eventually, they can be phased in, but now is definitely not that time. There's absolutely no way to get a class full of students to comply with sanitation and COVID guidelines, not at any age. There are also many issues that we cannot even imagine right now because there will be a whole new set of things for the students and staff to be bullied about. It will also cause more segregation of special needs students, not to mention the trauma that will be induced if a child becomes or is perceived to become ill while in the schools. The rush to get back for so many reasons, because each and every household has their own unique set of needs, is based on our old ways. We truly need to look at things as if we are creating a whole new life, new town and new education system. In life, when real crisis hits a family, the first thing they do is reprioritize. In most cases, the things that seemed most important or where most of their time is spent changes dramatically. We have a lifetime to learn. A few months of setback do not need to be viewed as setbacks, but experiences. I am 100% positive that each and every child has learned during this pandemic, even if the state decides not to qualify it as a learning time. Parents do not have to register their children for school until the age of six, yet we all do it at age five and earlier. It is because people are used to it. It's time to look at things differently. What should be happening right now is the community coming together to help each other with childcare. This is not the public school's responsibility. I understand that this is a multifaceted problem and finances and professions are all on the line, but that just means our solutions must also be multifaceted and with a changing dynamic that can be adjusted continuously to accommodate what is happening with this virus. The only choice right now is not expose teachers, children, staff and consequently all their families to this virus. Please consider using this time to set teachers and families up for remote learning and other alternatives. If there were any other choice right now, we wouldn't be doing this via Zoom meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, and I just want to make sure I have it. Amy Price, 16 Allen Drive. Uh.
It may have been read. I think that may have been read.
The last one. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I would double check. I did the same thing. I was I remember that some came in after, but that one looked like it was right at the last one.
That's everybody.
Yeah.
That's everybody. Okay.
I think that's everybody too.
So. Um. So I'm being asked to read. It wasn't submitted as as a citizen's comment. I can read it. The MEA has a letter that they would like me to read. And, um, I am not sure how to decide to do that because it wasn't submitted as a citizen's comment. We could read it during the presentation?
I think in under the circumstances, I mean, I would I would not have any objection to having having that read. I don't know if it might be helpful that Mike, if he's on the phone, he can just put, please read for citizen's comment and I know historically the unions have been allowed to speak during.
I agree. I don't have a problem either. Mary, Jessica?
I think it should be read.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a procedural question? Just because there was another comment that came into the chat from from a teacher. I'm not sure if they go to all of us as hosts or individually. So there was another comment that came in. I don't know if you want that read now or during the public or during the presentation. So just just if you're doing this one, I want to do aware of the other one.
I I can see it.
From from the text, it might be better in the presentation, but I just wanted you aware if we were doing.
I guess I don't see the one from the teacher.
It's about parent conferences, so and whether we're having them or not.
Huh, I wonder why I can't see it.
It may have been sent to Jennifer privately, because I don't.
Oh.
The three of us are hosts.
But it.
But I don't think it goes to all three of us.
It doesn't.
One of us.
Oh, okay.
If that makes sense.
So, um.
It might be helpful to read it if they're just during the presentation, if that's more contextual.
It's based on the comment. It feels like it, but again, I just wanted to.
Okay, so the comments in the chat, I think that we should we should do during the presentation, because the MEA did a statement letter and they sent it to us earlier today. I will, um, I will read that now. And then we'll go to the presentation. This was sent to Superintendent Bryant Haas today from the MEA. Dear Superintendent Haas, Maynard teachers miss their students and are eager to resume learning in person as that is how education is supposed to be. However, in alliance in alliance on safety measures with the AFT and the MTA and contingent upon CDC guidelines, it has become clear in the last few weeks that an in-person return to schools would unacceptably put the health and safety of our students, their families, our educators and everyone's community at risk. The MEA supports starting the 2020-21 school year remotely as the overwhelming consensus of the membership has dictated. The district must demonstrate that recommended health and safety conditions are met before buildings reopen and staff resumes in-person instruction. The MEA is committed to ongoing dialogue and negotiation with all stakeholders to ensure a safe return to in-person instruction. Thank you for your time and attention. Respectfully, Mike Waldron, MEA President. Thank you, Mike and the MEA. All right.
So if I can just add in, I also received a letter late today from Nanda Landers, the representative of the Maynard Education Support Association.
Do you want to read that?
Yeah, it sort of fits what's going on right now. Is that okay with you?
That's absolutely fine.
Okay. To the Maynard School Committee, the Maynard Education Support Association has polled its members regarding the Return to Learning Project subject. Of our members, 73.2% prefer prefer a remark remote start to our 2021 school year and 26.8 would prefer a hybrid model. We hope this helps you in your decision-making.
Okay.
So similar, I just wanted to share.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay.
Can I ask a question? I don't know.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I don't know if Mike is on the line or not. Mike Waldron, I'm assuming he is.
Mike Waldron, raise your hand. If you're here or say something in the chat. Actually, I already said something in the chat, so he is here.
OK, so I guess I wanted to ask what the percentages was because Nanda wrote, you know, told us what the percentage was on both sides. So I was going to ask Mike the same thing, same question.
Yeah, very weird. Where 84%, I believe.
84, OK, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
I have another citizen's comment that came through.
Yeah?
Yep.
All right. Look. Oh, here we go. All right, and this will be the last one, and then we'll start the presentation. Ken Asterbrook, 28 McKinley Street. In my view, there is nothing of greater importance than what measures are being taken to reduce mixing among the cohort groups. While reduced mixing occurs naturally at the elementary grades, the draft reentry plan seems to require a lot of mixing at the middle school and high school grades. Despite the statement on page 29 that guiding the guiding principles of the reentry committee were to reduce the number of transitions, reduce contact among different people and consider best practices in instruction, end quote. At the high school level, the draft schedule calls for four classes to be taught in four hours in the morning, including cleaning and transition time in between, and then three 25 minute classes to be taught in the afternoon. Given the need to allow for transition time in crowded hallways with students rushing to their lockers to get books and supplies for their next class, getting students settled down and ready to learn, and then cleaning time at the end of each class, this blind allegiance to having seven periods covering seven topics every day is, in my view, needlessly risky and educationally unsound. Instead, it seems like it would be far safer for the students to spend the entire morning, roughly two and a half hours with a single topic or block A, and the entire afternoon, roughly two and a half hours with second topic or block B. Alternatively, if there was concern about those periods being too long, there could be two blocks in the morning, roughly 1 to 0.1 and 3/4 hours each with a third in the afternoon. Either way, additional blocks would be taught on subsequent days in rotation. Ken Asterbrook, thank you, Ken. And I need a drink of water. OK, we good to go? Yes. So before we start the next item, which is the presentation of the school reopening plans, I would like to let you know that we invited members of the Board of Health, the Town Health Agent and the Contact Tracing Nurse to the meeting tonight. No one was available. So we have Megan Zamudo here tonight to just speak to the Towns Protocol in contact tracing and reporting. When we had to cancel the graduation two Fridays ago, there was a lot of questioning of the way the the district handled that and and how little information we had forthcoming. And that is because we weren't privy to a lot of information, and there's a lot of stuff we aren't allowed to say. So with that, I am going to introduce Megan Zamudo. Thank you for being here with us tonight. And if you could just clarify what the protocols are from the town side and clarify what the schools are maybe not responsible for, that would be super helpful.
Sure, well, thank you so much for having me. Again, my name is Megan Zamudo. I'm the Assistant Town Administrator. I'm also the Executive Director of Municipal Services at Town Hall, which includes planning, zoning, building, conservation and public health. So while some of my team was not able to make it today, I do feel qualified to speak on this subject. I thought I would start by telling you just a little bit about the team that works on public health. We have Kelly Palachin, who's our health agent. She is part time. She works eight hours a week for Town Hall. We have Beth Grossman, who's our food inspector. And we also contract out our public health nurse. Her name is Catherine Castle, and she is from Emerson Hospital. And her primary role in our contract, our contract with her is to have her work on contact tracing for communicable diseases. We've had this contract for a number of years, but we've obviously never used it as much as we have, you know, in recent months. So we're in constant communication. So I thought I'd tell you a little bit about where you can find some information about current statistics. If you go to the town website, there is an image that says COVID-19 update. If you click on that, you'll be brought to a chart that's updated daily that has all the information about our current positive cases and historical positive cases since March 1st. So we update that, like I said, daily. And it's a good resource for for folks that are interested in the trends and what's happening now. I put on every day, you know, what day it was updated. So you'll be able to see that pretty easily. So I thought I would talk just a few for a few minutes about what the contact tracing process is like in town. As I mentioned, our public health nurse from Emerson is the contact tracer for COVID-19. She is the only person who has access to our state database called Maven, where all the positive tests are tracked. So when someone goes in to have a test, their results will automatically go into Maven. But the time period between when you take a test and when they show up in Maven can vary significantly. That is for a number of reasons. It depends where you have your test, and it depends what lab services those test results. So some labs are out of state, some labs are local. You know, the timeframe can vary. But when the positive test results come in, they go to Maven and they're checked by a public health nurse every day. And when we check it in the morning or when our public health nurse Catherine Castle checks it, and if she just determines that there's a new positive case, what she does is interviews the patient. So we she would obtain obtain the pertinent information, like the symptoms the patient has, the onset date, and provide education as to what that person should be doing, what the quarantine regulations are. You know, things are constantly changing from the state and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So she kind of provides all of that information. The other part is contact tracing. So she will speak with the patient and get a list of people that have been close contacts. And that is close contacts that they have been with up until 48 hours prior of either the onset of symptoms or the positive test, if they were asymptomatic. And the definition of a close contact is someone that you're within six feet of for 15 minutes. So once we get that list, our public health nurse will call all those people, give them the information. You know, now things are changing, tests are becoming more available, ask them to get tested. You know, as we kind of navigate this, sometimes it's a little early to be tested. So they might recommend that, you know, if you get a negative, you should maybe retest in a few days. But either way, the state guidance is passed down to that person who is a close contact and requiring them to, you know, follow the standard protocol. What else we do is we, you know, we update our website when we have a new when we have new cases, of course. What we've done in the past is written and distributed press releases. If there's a major trend, we did one recently, of course, and closer to the beginning when this was all starting. We are in constant communication. Our public health nurse is speaking with the school nurses. You know, I've spoken with the superintendent's office regarding kind of these processes, and we're working together. Our public health agent, Kelly Palatronic, has has agreed to review the reopening plans, walk the schools with our Department of Public Works Director. So she'll be involved in the reopening and provide guidance. She has guidance from the state because we they are listening to kind of state phone calls that are once or twice a week that new guidance and updates are provided. So that's kind of the pipeline of where we're getting our information. I also just want to say, you know, I mentioned that our public health nurse is the only person that has access to the state database that gives any type of identifying information about the patients. So I do not have, nor will I ever see ages, gender, location of any patients. It is not information I have, it's not information I could share if I did have it. So, you know, it's it is difficult. I can imagine, you know, trying to understand any potential clusters, but we, you know, really have to follow HIPAA and state laws regarding privacy. And if there's a question of if there's anything I can share, I'm always going to ask the state so that we're, you know, following the proper guidelines. But, you know, as I mentioned, our team is working very hard on this, and, you know, we are in communication with school administrations. So as as you begin to reopen, however that looks, we will continue to work together, share best practices and share any trends as as they come about. That's it for me.
Thank you, Megan. I have a question, Megan, for you. With the contact tracing, I've heard earlier on that there is like usually either a standard number that that sometimes is used from the state possibly. Have you? Do you have any insight to that? I'm just wondering if someone in the public is contacted. Is there a certain number that has historically? A phone number, right, so that a phone number. So it could be.
People that are, we mostly have our public health nurses doing most of the contact tracing. There are, we, there is a state program that is doing additional support for state for for contact tracing. There's certain criteria for the types of cases that can be handed over to a state contact tracer. And so occasionally, it could go to that person. But likely, if it's in Maynard, you know, it will be our public health nurse. So what their phone number is, I, yeah, I can't I can't exactly say. But I know that our public health nurse has been very creative in trying to reach people. You know, she's texted, she's, you know, called. She said she's not using Snapchat, but she's pretty close. So however, she can get somebody, she will.
That's important, it's important. Yeah, thank you.
Mary.
Megan, if I'm if I read it correctly, I'm just on the site now. But so there's been 78 confirmed cases since March.
Correct.
Has that, I can't seem to find the the biograph or anything that says, is that on a downward cycle? Did we, is there, like, did we have more in June? Or is it on an escalating cycle? Can you speak to that?
Sure, yeah, so we I so we have, we were down to zero one, zero or one case for most of the month of July, and there has been an uptick recently. So I think we were up to about seven, then someone, you know, once the quarantine period and a negative test is produced, they can come off that current list. So that is kind of always evolving. And so now, you know, it has been steady at six for a couple of days.
OK, thank you.
Right.
I have a question, too.
Yeah.
So you just described that how you would alert someone via contact tracing would be 15 minutes or more with less than six feet of spacing. So under our hybrid hybrid model, that's not supposed to happen somehow magically. So does that mean you're not going to be notifying a whole classroom if a child or a teacher tests positive? Or will you have different metrics based upon the fact that it's a school setting?
That's a good question. I think we'd have to work with the school nurses to determine. You know, I would think that we there would be want to be in contact with the people in the classroom.
Yeah, that's Mike.
Could be close within, you know, a lot. When when we're talking about children, the parents are going to have to be involved. The teachers are going to have, you know, or however we can, you know, through privacy laws with teachers. But it's right, you know, right now, the way our contact tracing system is set up is you call the adults, you ask, who have you been around in the last week? And then you get that group. So of course, things are going to have to adjust as we, you know, kind of enter this new new reality here.
And to Megan's point, the guidance from D E S I has gives protocols for informing students who are in the class, whether it's a student and or a teacher, not not identifying them by name, but informing classmates and whatnot. To your point, Jessica, it is a smaller space. So there are pretty specific protocols in the guidance from D E S I.
OK. I think, though, what what the, oh, sorry.
Nope, it's OK.
But Jessica, to your to your point, though, I think what had had come up is that the transitions in between classes, you know, although they may come in close, they might not last more than 15 minutes. And I wonder, I know that has been a concern that that's been raised, that even though they're less than six feet apart, if kids are transitioning in the hallway, that that would be something that people might worry about.
And mine, I'm just thinking even just confined space, even if you're six feet apart in a enclosed classroom, I would if I would want to know as a parent if I chose to the hybrid model, so.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions on the comment. Jen, do you want to read the one that you got from a teacher first? Does that fit in here?
No.
No.
It's it's more about school procedures, but.
OK, so I have two from from parents right now. The first is 11 Nick Lane, Alicia Gallo or Alicia Gallo. And she asks, if a student tests positive or their cohort needs to also quarantine or get tested, how does that affect a sibling of the COVID positive patient and that sibling's cohort class?
Sure, I can, I can say that part of the contact tracing does identify family members as close contacts. So, you know, that the family would follow the recommended protocol from the public health nurse from the.
So then, I guess to Jen and Brian, the question would be, so if a sibling tests positive, that whole class needs to be quarantined. Does the sibling of the positive test, do they then, does that entire class need to be quarantined at that point?
And all siblings of the kids in that class, not just the positive, right? So I have three, you know, two kids, does that mean then?
So it becomes a conversation with the nurses and the Department of Public Health and Megan, and it's very likely that it could be all three of those groups. It could be, it could just lead to you need to close the school for temporarily, just depending on the contact tracing, whether it's a large family with lots of kids, what grades they're in, whether they're across buildings. But we wouldn't take any chances. We would follow the recommendations, and they would all probably have to self quarantine, get tested if they want, and or self quarantine for the 14 days.
OK. Second question, Zoe Donahue, 49 Waltham Street. Is there a plan to keep students physically distant upon arrival dismissal and in between classes in the hallways? I would also like more details on what the two remote learning days per week will actually look like for both students and teachers. How much is synchronous versus asynchronous? Are the teachers really expected to teach in person and online simultaneously? OK, so maybe this should wait until after the presentation.
I was going to let Megan answer it. Well, a sense of humor, that's good.
Oh, you know what? You have hard jobs here today.
Throw a little humor in there now and again.
Yeah. So that is it for the questions for Megan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, you know, if anyone wants to reach out to me, I'm happy to speak with anyone. You know, our, like, as I mentioned, our team works limited hours and but we're working together and and I'm there all the time, here all the time. So people can feel free to reach out to me. The Board of Health email is BOH, I think, at townofmaynard.net. So feel free to feel free to contact me, but also. So feel free to, feel free to contact me, but also know that I'm working with school administration, my team's working with school administration to make sure that you have access to all the best practices. And, you know, we'll, we'll work together to do the best we can through this crisis. So I appreciate you inviting me.
Megan, before you go, I have one question. Has there been any discussion of maybe increasing the hours of either the town nurse or the town health agent in light of what's going on? And if the CARES Act money cover that salary?
Yeah, I mean, certainly our public health nurse has been working constantly. I mean, that is, that has not been limited by funds. And we did receive a, you know, fairly significant grant, I think about $12,000 from a state health group. It's another acronym that starts with an M, I apologize. But I, I got some good news today that the funds that we got are able to be spent through the end of December. So, I mean, that's very helpful as we are paying these Emerson bills, you know, to have that contact tracing. We also have increased some of the hours of our health agents. So it does work for another community, so there's only so many hours in the day. And we've increased some hours for our food inspector who has had to do, you know, additional infections for businesses in town. So, yeah, I mean, we definitely, for, during this crisis, we are applying for and have been lucky to receive some additional funding. But, you know, our, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anyone to think that the budget is limiting, you know, our contact tracing. We're, we're keeping up. And when we can't, we reach out to the state for supplementary help.
Megan, do you have a suggestion, if, if someone want to reach out to you, that they should, or reach out to the public health agent because they're not entirely, you know, full-time, should they add you to that email as well, or would that be?
She's very responsive, but I'm also happy, you know, to, to answer questions and facilitate this type of information. Yeah, I'm, I'm on the website too. So I'm Zamudo at townofmaynard.net.
Jessica has one more question.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just going through notes here that I had taken. I, I don't know if you would know this answer, if I have to email the Board of Health, but I'm just curious if there has been an actual metric that has been identified as a public health agency where going back to in-person learning is feasible with safety measures.
There hasn't been yet, and Mr. Haas and I were just on a call last week talking about that. And, you know, wouldn't it be like more convenient if, if not even how many per school, but how many per, you know, students you could think about, okay, well, how many students are in this school? What, what would you need to close it down? You know, that information has not yet been provided. It's, I think it's still evolving with the state guidance. And, you know, we'll definitely, that, I actually, I was talking to someone on, the people that gave, gave us that health grant today, and they asked if we had any questions and that. I was talking about this meeting tonight and school reopening and if we could have some metrics. Because although local decision is helpful, I think a regional approach to some of these things would also be.
And yours would be based on evidence and not politics.
On an island here, you know, we, we want to be doing the same thing as our, as our neighbors. So, you know, that, that is something that we're, we're continuing to ask the state for, for guidance on that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Megan.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
You're welcome to stay and hang out. I mean.
I think I will, for a little bit anyway, thank you.
All right. Okay, so now we are going to go on to Brian.
Okay, so school reopening plan. Let me say that it's been a long month of July. And as Megan indicated, when we started this planning, if you will, our numbers were really at zero, zero in Maynard, the numbers on the website that she referenced. And they've perked up a little bit, obviously that was related, you know, graduation cancellation was related to that. So this really has been an evolving process in the last, you know, several months. But more so, it's, it shifted pretty recently. So much so that we have, we had a report that was due on the 31st that the school committee approved, which was an overview of the three options that we've talked about, that all school systems have been talking about, quite frankly, throughout the month of July. Do you want to do in-person, hybrid, or remote? And we've done that. And then more information keeps coming, and it really evolves almost every day. So that our most recent call was today at noon with the Commission of Education, who we have our final plan, which we were intending to ask, I was intending to make a recommendation and ask for a vote tonight. But we were on the phone at noon today and he said, things are changing. You probably need a little more time. Let me give you until the 4th, you know, not me personally, but superintendents around the state, you have an extra week or so. You can have until the 14th to update your plans, revise them, have some further discussions with school committees, take it to a vote, because this was the week. If you're watching the news, this is the week when school, when towns and superintendents are going to school committees and making recommendations and school committees are passing votes or, you know, on, in terms of how they want to reopen schools. And even to this date, there've been several meetings this week, it, it varies. We have towns around us that are saying, we're going full remote, and we have towns around us that are saying, we'll do nothing less than full in-person or hybrid. So it, it runs the gamut still tonight. The thing that I think has worked well for us in that we were able, today in particular, we were able to take a step back, take a breath. We've been looking at all the options. And I think if you look, and I'll walk us through the re-entry plan. I think in my own head and in working with staff and in working, listening, you know, we've asked, and we asked the community, we did a survey early, you know, where would you lie? And it was pretty split between hybrid, remote, some in the middle. But there was not an overwhelming response, one way or the other, from any contingency group, if you will, for any group of stakeholders, including staff. I think that shifted in the last week. I'm going to walk us through this plan, and I think you've recognized some of the things that in this plan are, my thinking was leaning towards, we really can go hybrid. We worked hard to create a hybrid system that incorporated all the safety recommendations from all the DESI organizations, you know, from that overarching organization. But the safety protocols in terms of distance, masks. When we started talking about masks, we started at grades three and up will wear them. We're not going to worry about pre-K to two, they're too young. And then things shifted, and there's more medical evidence that says really everybody has to wear them. So then a few towns said, you know what, pre-K through 12, that's our policy. So when we get there in this plan, and I'll start walking us through there, you can see how things have shifted from just a month ago, which honestly might feel like a year ago, but it was only a few weeks, it was like 28 days. And yes, things have shifted from all the comments. It's pretty, you know, there's a pretty strong theme of we're more comfortable, we're going remote. Not because we don't want to work, I mean, it, from the teachers, from the parents, not because we don't want our kids in school. I mean, what I hear is, we love the Maynard teachers, they do a phenomenal job. We want them to teach our children from the parents. But we're concerned about that safety, the health and safety of our children and of our teachers. And from the teachers, from the letter, from the support staff, the paraprofessionals, they're concerned about health and safety. So that's, has shifted significantly in the last couple of weeks. So just putting that out there, I recognize that. So I think as we walk through this draft, it goes through our vision, our mission, some very sort of basic school system type stuff. And then it goes through, how many people have involved? Just so you know, this has involved literally hundreds of people, of staff. Maybe not hundreds, but more than a hundred. The reopening committee itself is that, the district one, I think is 70 people. And this is funny, I asked them, I put it out there, I don't even know if I should have, it was last week, I think. I put it out there and said, how are we feeling about remote or hybrid? And it was a pretty middle-of-the-road conversation, maybe starting to lean a little toward remote, but there was still a percentage almost equal of, I really need to get back in the building, I want to see my kids, we can do this hybrid model. So that's how quickly this is shifting. But there's been a lot of involvement in this plan, from teachers. We've taken information from public surveys, from the families, from the Department of Public Health, from, so just, so you know, from the Department of Education, it's been a collaborative process. So as I go through this plan, we looked at, you know, what are the pros and cons of each model? We looked at communication, we looked at health and, health and safety protocols. We looked at cleaning procedures, we looked at the facilities. You know, and, and it's funny, some of our buildings, one of them, they don't match up well with the protocols for safety, for cleaning, not for cleaning and safety, for ventilation. Green Meadow, it's tough. We have great air purifiers. Super high-quality air purifiers that most people can't even afford to put in their buildings. But in order for them to work properly, you need the doors to the outside and the windows closed. But the building doesn't have air conditioning, and it gets really hot in there. So it's reasonable that one would want to open the windows and doors and bring fresh air in. But then that doesn't work as well as we want it to. So there are some challenges that we face as a district, building by building. And we've considered those things. Just, I put that out there to say that this is a really complex discussion and topic and just how we move forward. It's not an easy decision, and it's not an easy recommendation. The buses, we didn't get that information until late, and by now, everybody's seen the diagrams. You're basically one student per bench zigzag up and down with a monitor. That's not how typically buses run, but we've added that in and, you know, and taken that into consideration. How do visitors come in the building? Actually, do we even want visitors in the bu, no, we don't, that's just one more person, so we're not doing visitors. And then we're trying to take into account, and this is a, this one is a little bit different, it's the social emotional learning of everyone. So we're good, I say, as educators of thinking about what's best for students. It's kind of in our core, it's how we look at things, it's how we look at a budget, what's best for students? When we talk about social emotional learning, first and foremost, what's best for students? And this summer, we've been working at expanding that, what's best for students and staff? What's best for students, staff, and families? And trying to incorporate that discussion and that topic to be more inclusive. And that's a challenge, just because that may not be our area of expertise, we have to reach out and get support. And how do we do that better? Because we know it's important, and we value our staff, and we value our students and our families. Specifically, and this is all, you know, we talked about our at-risk students, you know, our, our special education students, our EL students, our economically disadvantaged students, all those at-risk students for any number of reasons. How can we support them specifically? And that gets harder and harder as these models change. And we know what we used to do, and we know how we did it, and it worked, and in many, many cases, it worked really well, and we saw great progress. But if we change the whole model, we have to take a step back and really work that through. And Mr. Ferrante has been great helping us do that, and really looking at all the intricate details of that. So then we get to back-to-school plans. And the first plan was, you know, we're going to come back to school in-person like nothing was wrong. You know, we did the minimal amount of work on that one, because we knew that's not even in the realm of reason for us, because we'd be less than six feet. And we, we said early on, we're going to be at the high end of that, of that physical distancing. We're not comfortable with three, even though we could do three, it doesn't feel right. So we said, nope, we're going to go to at least six, which then kind of pushes us very quickly to a hybrid model. Just, just on that fact alone, if we're only, if we're going to keep six feet, we can only have so many kids in the building, we automatically end up in a hybrid model. And then it took time to really figure out, what might that look like? Do we want to go, you know, there were conversations across the state with superintendents and within this district about, should we go week eight, week B? Should we do every other day? Should we do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday? There wasn't a right or a wrong answer, it was just what worked for our community. Ultimately, we came down to this Monday, Tuesday with a half-day basically, and then a Wednesday remote day, so a cohort A and a cohort B. And the thinking behind that, with all these, all these smart people, we're putting, so the plus is, we get kids and teachers in the room. We know that's important. We know that those connections that teachers make with kids and kids make with teachers, that's as important as the academics. So we get that, we know that, but we also wanted to be as safe as possible, so we're going to keep six feet. We're going to wear masks, and we're going to limit the amount of time that we're in a building for everybody. That's how the thinking behind that hybrid, just in a big overview. Then we talked about the full remote. And here's where I think our thinking a month ago was much more aligned with the hybrid. Because you say, hey, so it goes to full remote, and there's almost as much information in this plan as there is for the full in-person. Because we really didn't feel like we had to go this route at this time. We were really feeling like hybrid works, it fits for most of us. But we've since gone back to the drawing table, if you will, and really found and done some more thinking and planning around what might schedules look like. So then you get to specific plans within here. We talk about Green Meadow. And we talk about what might the phase one half-day look like. And then we realize, hey, this is going to look different for a preschooler than it will for, say, a kindergartner or a first grader through a third grader. So there are different schedules in here. And I'm not going to read the graphs to you, because we'd be here until midnight. But, so you know, the elementary staff, they took this seriously. They take it seriously, they really tried to think it through, what's best for my preschool kid? My kid in front of me who's that young, how many days do I need to see them? How can I make them, you know, still stay, stay safe? That's why you see slightly different schedules for pre-K, K, one to three, because as they get older, there's a little more independence. There's a little more, looks a little more like the middle school one. We talk a little bit about lunch. So we, another part of, why do we want to go half-day? Lunch got difficult, to be quite frank, it got really difficult. And we involved the nurses in the conversation, and the principals in the conversation, and the teachers. And food allergies comes to the top of the list. How do we do that safely if we're eating in the classroom? And even if I'm six feet apart, if I'm here and I'm having a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and the, you know, and my friend's allergic to peanut butter, that's going to be a problem, and some airborne, you know, airborne allergies are significant. So eating in the classrooms got super difficult. And then, how much time do we want to spend transitioning between class and the cafeteria? And normally, we do it three or four times, that's pretty typical in a school, which is still, so, it's a couple of hours. But now, we're going to have to do it twice as many times. And we're going to, we're going to be starting lunch when they walk in the door and ending when they leave. So we decided, that's not efficient. We still want to feed people, and we recognize hungry students bad, full stomachs good. So we worked at the food company, who is incredibly accommodating. And yes, we can provide breakfast on the way in as a grab and go, not breakfast, it's probably more like a granola bar, but something. And then on the way out, they get a lunch, whether it's in a bag or a box. They've been doing this, and they're good at, and they said, absolutely, we can accommodate that. If we need to, we even talked about having the two plans, the hybrid and the remote. The food company said, we can absolutely make a route and do a delivery. So we've been really thinking about all this and how to make it work for our kids and our community. We've talked about recess, classrooms. We, you know, one of the topics that comes up as I'm going through are health and safety protocols. Having classes outside. Well, that sounds like a great idea. Probably depends where you live, New England, it's a little dicey, depending on the weather. And then we've been really good as a state at taking Alice training seriously. So we lock our buildings, our doors are secure, you need to get buzzed in. I mean, even now, if you come to visit me, you can't even walk in the front door, you need to get buzzed in, and if you're nice, Colleen's going to let you in. So people brought that to our attention, because at first, we're like, yeah, we could go outside, we could go here. Could we go to the court, courtyards at the Fowler Middle School and a green medal? Absolutely, it's a secure, that's inside, if you will, the building envelope. But just going outside randomly doesn't necessarily start to feel so safe. So that gets modified a bit. So I'm, why am I telling you, I'm sharing with you sort of all the intricacies of this. So you understand, we really have been taking this seriously and trying to look at every avenue to come up with a plan that was viable and is viable. That gets us to the Fowler Middle School. Now, if we're going through this plan, I've turned my page to about page 26, just for fun. So I'm sort of tracking along the way, going through Green Meadow, the hybrid model, the remote model. Now I'm looking at Fowler, and again, these teachers and principals have worked tirelessly to come up with a schedule that's like, this is really, you know, it's almost ingenious in some ways. They've got, you know, if I look at that, I'm like, oh, so they have cohorts. So we've matched kids and put them together so they're not transitioning as much. They stay in one room, they're really taking all this new information that we never think about. We just schedule them in and go, and it works fabulously. Now, we didn't do that, we had to really rethink that. They were able to do that. And they would have, you know, English, world language, history, science, and math. And one of those would be remote during each of the first five periods. So we could accommodate a high. So we could accommodate a hybrid model and a remote model simultaneously. And if I'm a teacher, I'm either teaching the kids in front of me in the hybrid model and/or that one period, I'm teaching only my remote kids. So I'm not trying to do the same thing at the same time. They were thoughtful about this. They came up with a good, solid plan. They, they put check-ins. They reckon, and so this is true and I'll probably repeat this, but one of the lessons that we learned from spring to fall, we didn't have enough check-ins with teachers and students. And that, you know, we, I think we heard that tonight in some of the parent comments. I've heard that. Teachers have said that. That's not a Maynard issue. That was an educational issue across the country that everybody, he said, hey, you need to close your doors and you need to go to a remote model that you've never done and you need to do it in like 72 hours. People did the best they could do and some people were just naturally good at it. I mean, I know people that you put a camera in front of them and they're phenomenal. And other people are rock stars without a camera and you put a camera in front of them and they turn red and get all shaky. I don't know what happens to them. But we learned from that. So if you, as we're going through the schedules, there's a much higher level of check-in and teaching between teacher and students, whether we're talking hybrid or we're talking remote. There's also a higher level of across the, across the board from pre-K through 12 of accountability. The commissioner, actually, I will give him credit for as many times that he says, I'll get you that in two weeks, or we're thinking about that, or I changed my mind. There's been a couple of things he's been very consistent about and I agree with him on, how does remote learning need to be different? We need to make sure that everybody's accountable. We need to take attendance. We need to make sure that we're hitting learning standards and we need to give grades. And he's been pretty consistent on those four things. We didn't do those in spring. Now we're doing those and our teachers are building that into the model moving forward. Just, so now I'm just turning pages through Fowler's because they have a really solid schedule for the hybrid and we will show you at the end, what does the potential schedule for remote look like? Because we have started working on that. Because we've been watching and feeling and hearing and learning as this has evolved. So the high school, equally strong, they have worked tirelessly. I mean, I see some of the same people, I will tell you, on every committee. And we have a lot of committees. They have building committees, they have opening committees, they have safety committees, technology committees, innovation committees. And I just named a few. And they're different people, they're the same people. The Maynard staff has worked all summer. Most of them did not get a summer. They worked and they worked because they want to do a great job with the students of Maynard. So we talk about, in the Maynard High School one, we talk about classroom spaces, we talk about not sharing materials like we normally do. We talk, and each school has talked about arrival and dismissal procedures and they're flushing that out. It will come to fruition after we do the parent survey and we actually have numbers of how many kids are coming in the building? Because they're coming up with plans, always one-way, you know, this way or like a road, stay on this side, you go on that side. But once we get hard numbers, this sort of gets flushed out in greater detail. But they've been thinking about all these things. And they came up with an equally good, strong cohort model. It's not as, and I will tell you, high schools across the state struggle with what the middle school is able to do. Because in high school, and you know this, so I'm not telling you anything that you don't know, parents. I'm reminding you of when you hit ninth grade, your classes now are worth credit. They're no more important than your eighth grade class or your fourth grade class, but they're credit-bearing and you have to accrue the right number of credits, according to the state of Massachusetts, in the right areas to graduate. So it's not as easy as just saying, let's just put these things together because it feels right. They need to have the right amount of classes as a freshman to be, to be considered the next year a sophomore. And at the end of their senior year, if we've done it all correctly, and we will, they graduate. So that's one of the reasons the high school schedules is, they're just, they're more complicated. And the high school staff has worked really hard in trying to figure this out to make sure, and I hear this at the meetings, that we're able to offer the academics, the support, everything that every student needs, so that when this is over and we're back to school, nobody's missed anything, that they're ready to move on. Whether it's a math class, it's a history class, we don't want them to miss it. And they have worked really hard to come up with schedules that allow them to do that in a hybrid model and a remote model. Again, I'll acknowledge, these are much more heavily geared toward hybrid, but we will share with you momentarily, information about the remote model. The one thing I will say is we've always recognized from the very beginning of this planning, that we were offering two models. We really weren't offering in-person, but we were offering hybrid, that was sort of one option, and always a remote option. Because we recognized, there are families that aren't going to be comfortable sending kids, so that was always on the, always an option. So before I open it up to questions, and I'm sure there will be many questions, and luckily for me, part of the team is here. I have Mr. Ferrante for some, you know, specifics, special education questions. If it's specific, specific to your child, you may just want to send an email and have an off-the-record conversation with him. General question, absolutely appropriate, he'll know, you know, if he can answer it, he will. And Ms. Claudette, Assistant Superintendent, who is just uber knowledgeable when it comes to the curriculum and logistics of this, so she's going to chime in to some of these questions as well, but I'm going to ask her to screen share, so I'm going to miss your faces and you're going to miss mine maybe, I'm not sure. But what you're going to see are the most recent schedules for what a remote day would look like. So again, I will preface, these are samples. I do not want somebody leaving here feeling like, you said it was going to be starting at 8:30 and ending at 2 o'clock and that's the end of it and how dare you. These are samples. But somebody asked earlier, I think one of the parents in the questions or in the comments earlier said, what does that sample look like? So you can see for that K through five, potentially, they start around that time, 8:30 or so, and they have an all-googled class meeting. Then they would go through some rotations throughout their day. So this is the remote, they're at home, but they're all going to meet. Then they're going to get, then they're going to have some independent, before they get to the independent, the teacher's going to work with them, maybe as a whole group, maybe as small groups, and they're going to rotate through and they can do that virtually. The teacher can create, you know, groups of five and check in with that group or groups of whatever, a lower number. And I might even stop and ask Ms. Claudette to clarify that schedule a little bit, because she can probably explain these three, these three schedules in two minutes better than I can. So why don't you do that for me?
Okay, perfect. So you were doing great on the elementary schedule. So this is the remote education model, whether it is, what, if we decide to go fully remote for all students, or if it is what we are doing for students who select remote, if we are offering a hybrid model. And the concept, as Mr. Haas said, differently than the spring, and we want to make sure we emphasize this, is that all students who are remote, whether they are remote on, in a hybrid schedule and those are their remote days, or they are remote fully, either because we have selected to go remote or because they are in a remote model from the beginning. We need greater interaction and connection between teachers and students and between staff and students. Greater facilitation, particularly at the younger levels, to make sure that during those, those independent times, there are people available that can help facilitate some of that learning. So the concept that you see here for the elementary schedule is that there would be a form of whole group or all-class meeting, creating that connection with the classes, providing some direct instruction. And then similar to what happens in a classroom space, working through some form of station rotation, where the students are completing some work independently, but then also have an opportunity to work with a staff member. We are also looking at how we can use our staff that we have creatively, so that more staff are available to provide some of these, these check-in supports or instruction. Again, whether that be Title I staff, special education, et cetera. We want to make sure that there are specials that are built in. We believe that our special teachers provide an incredible education for our students and there are a lot of students for whom those special classes are the places where they can relax and be themselves. And so we want to make sure that we prioritize that, so you see that is in here. And then you would essentially repeat the same component in the afternoon. So not being on a screen the entire day by any extent, providing lots of opportunities for particularly younger students to be able to have breaks, to be able to do movement, but also trying to get that nice balance of staff facilitated learning for students, particularly at the younger level. And again, as Mr. Haas said, these are sample schedules. So as, as we move into more flushed-out models, which would, with whichever model we choose, we'll be working with the instruction group and the building groups on those specifically. When we move into six through eight, the way in which the schedule was organized, again, whether it was in the hybrid model or whether it used to go remote completely, essentially what would wind up happening is that there would be a remote section of each class. And so the students would follow their schedule. If I have math first in the morning and then science or history. So that time period is the time period that is blocked off for me to meet with that teacher. That does not mean, however, that I am going to be sitting on a computer looking at my math teacher for 47 minutes from 8 to 8:47. It provides an opportunity, however, to once again, provide that direct instruction, that connection, facilitated work and independent work as well, and organize it in that way. This model was built, it's the Maynard Remote Education Plan, if we were to have both the remote education working alongside the hybrid model, which is why you see the, the content special prioritized for the morning and the specials in the afternoon. Because that allows for our teachers, if we are in the hybrid model, to be available, our special, our content teachers, excuse me, core content teachers, to be available to check in and do sessions with the students who are remote on those days in the afternoon. So that's why it's built this way in terms of having the specials in the afternoon. When we move into, hold on one second, I apologize. Sorry about that. When we move into the high school, again, trying to prioritize and keeping student schedules whole, that they have access to one-hour teachers, Maynard Public School teachers, and making sure that they have access to the curriculum and the, and the course sequencing that they need for their programming. The high school team worked carefully to create essentially, similar to six, seven and eight, where students would be running through their schedule. So again, the students would have their courses that would be outlined, they would meet for a certain period of time. And, and the remote component of that would be, again, not that I'm sitting on a screen watching my teacher talk to me for that period of time, but instead, the teachers would be providing some direct instruction or some activities and then doing some facilitation and facilitated group work and things of that nature. Again, this schedule model is built off of the notion of having a hybrid schedule work alongside of the remote pathway. And so adjustments can be made, should the district choose to go fully remote, to be able to provide different sort of timing pieces there. So those are, those are the remote sample schedules. The one thing that I think is important in thinking about is that whether we choose to go remote or hybrid, to offer both, as Mr. Haas said, there will always be a remote option available. But should we choose to start with a hybrid model and offer that option to our families? The way in which our teachers are thinking about the instruction really allows for that training, that professional development and that curriculum planning to be done in such a way that it, it doesn't create a stopgap in October if we would need to go remote completely because of health reasons. Instead, what it does is it allows us to continue to do our planning, to do some in-person instruction, which we, which we know how to do, we're comfortable with, and then create those lessons over time that would allow for that remote, should we need to go fully remote in October. I, I have full belief in our staff that should we choose that remote is, that the remote only option is the option for the community, that we will be ready and able to move forward with a robust remote model of education for your students that looks very different than, than what we had in the spring.
Thank you.
And I don't know how to take my share screen share. I'll figure it out.
Okay, so that's an overview of all or most of the complexities and issues that we incorporated into the plan. And at this point, some of you I know, because I see your names, and there's about 125 of you or so, 129 now, some of you joined us this afternoon for a two and a half, two and a half hour Zoom session. It was like a marathon session, it was quite fun, where some of your questions hopefully got answered. But we would probably, I, I would say if you have questions, this would, I don't know, Madam Chair, is that the direction?
The direction. So I have, I have two right now. The first one is from Zoe Donahue, 49 Waltham Street. I began to read that earlier, but I think it's more appropriate now. Is there a plan to keep students physically distant upon arrival, dismissal and in between, and between classes in the hallways? Do you want me to read all of her questions or do you want to answer one and then I'll read the next one?
I think that's probably easier.
Okay.
So they are planning at each building, what that looks like and it's different at each building. So we will share that out and it's sort of been flushed out at one layer, at one level. It could change depending on how many kids we're talking about. But what I would say is that at each school, like Mr. Rulo, Mr. Bar, Mr. Kerry Ganes, they've all really worked with their staff to come up with, and the safety committee, how do we, how do we bring them in? There was lots of discussion over, should we have more than one entrance? Now, if we go back to Alice training, the answer is no, we should have one way in and one way out. That's the safest way to do this in terms of that level of safety. In this order of safety, we look at multiple ways in and multiple ways out and spacing them out, otherwise we end up with a long, a long line and then we have trouble with social distancing. So having the multiple ways in is more helpful in this case. Having hand sanitizer right inside the building at all of those places has been considered and will happen. So there are plans for that and within the building, there's significantly less movement between pre-K and eight for sure, if we're at a hybrid model, because they're not transitioning between classes, the teachers are. So they've really worked hard to minimize that. At the high school, I know they're working on that. I don't know off the top of my head exactly what that plan is at the high school. If, if you do, you're welcome to add on.
And so they are working to minimize transitions in the hallways, making sure that students are staying six feet apart, having, you know, one classroom move at a time type of things of that nature. And again, those are being fully flushed out as we finalize which, whichever option we are in.
Okay. Second, I would also like more details on what the two remote learning days per week will actually look like for both students and teachers. How much is synchronous versus asynchronous? I don't know if you, I, I, I'm wondering if that was already explained maybe during your presentation.
I can address that in terms of that piece, because if we were to choose to go into a hybrid model, there would be students who are engaged in the hybrid model at home, so they would have remote instruction. That instruction would have synchronous elements to it. Right now, the way our K to eight programming is working. Let me just make sure I'm getting this right. Right now, the way our K to eight programming is working is that those core content teachers during that time that the students are at home are providing in-person instruction. However, we do have times throughout the afternoon where they will be providing small group sessions, check-in, direct instruction in the afternoon every day. So that was part of the benefit of the half-day model to allow for the afternoon for those students who are at home. Additionally, once we identify how many students are coming back into the buildings, if we choose to go into the, the hybrid model, we'll be looking at our staffing levels to determine if there is a way that we can, and I believe that we can, reorganize what our staff are doing in certain aspects of the day, so that we have paraprofessionals or other administrators or other teachers who may not be providing direct instruction to students in front of them. I need to slow down, I'm sorry. Providing, providing some remote support for students at home. So if we had a small group session that a teacher had trained a paraprofessional in providing facilitation and if we did a, you know, at the middle school level, if we needed to have a study group session that was facilitated. So we'd be looking to schedule those on days where students are remote, so that there would be more support, face-to-face support during that time. And they, I believe another question is, are we expecting teachers to teach remotely and in-person at the same time? The K to eight model provides- The K to eight model provides for teachers to not be doing that. It does provide opportunity for, for some students to, to zoom in, for example, in the grade six classrooms and see some direct instructions, should a teacher want to do that. But we're trying to, to have it so that that does not have to happen for any number of reasons that I'm sure folks can, can appreciate. At the high school level, in order to preserve and protect the course offerings, they did need to create a structure where the students would be expected to be available and the teacher would be facilitating those pieces, but they believe that they have a, a model in mind that would allow them to do that.
Okay. Thank you. And then last one, are teachers really expected to teach in-person and online simultaneously?
Okay, so that's what I was just, just addressing in terms of that piece. We are trying to avoid that again, our six to eight model does, I'm sorry, K to eight model does allow for that to occur. The high school model, they, they will be doing both. That being said, the, the teachers, at least in the schedule, the way that they've crafted it, believe that it's a doable component.
So next I have from Con Ditto, who is an OT here in, in the Maynard District, I think most people know. She is from Sutton. She's not a Maynard resident, but because she works for the district, she is obviously allowed to speak. So her question is, are there no parent-teacher conferences this year or will that be handled differently?
I would think that will be handled differently, but we would still have teacher conferences.
Okay. I have, let's see, okay. Jen Krainic, eleven Deer Path. Hi all, one of my children at Fowler has an IEP and an aid for academics, though he's in all typical classes. Does the tentative remote schedule you just provided to us apply to the sped community as well? Or will we slash our students receive a different schedule than their typical peers?
Great question. It sounds like from the brief information in that, that the student would get a typical schedule, because it sounds like that student is in typical classes with support. And then we are looking at, and I don't know that it would apply to the student, because I don't know all the intricacies of the IEP, but some students who needed additional services might be staying longer than the half-day, depending on what their level of need is. Does that answer that question?
I think so.
Okay.
I have.
Miss again.
What?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, no, I have someone who just asked me a question, but I need them to give me their first and last name and address.
And if Jeff wants, if he wants to comment on that while you're looking, feel.
Oh yeah, Jeff.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder there.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything you want to weigh in on?
Well, I think in that last question, it was if the student was, if we're in a completely remote situation. In a hybrid situation, yes, some of the students would stay a little, possibly could stay longer, depending on their services on their individual IEP. In a remote setting, absolutely, we're still providing that level of support, but it is going to look different than what it would be if the student was in the hybrid model or in full-time. But right now, that, that's the unknown piece for, for me and the, the reopening team for special ed is how many kids are going to be coming in? For example, if we went with a hybrid model, some parents might choose to go remote. How many children would we have going remote? Because that will impact, who would do the support? Although the support would still be in place. And the other question is, we may have staff that are unable to come in for the hybrid model, but are available for the remote. So that's almost like a remote team. So once we have that information, we can get a little tighter as far as the individual schedules for each student's IEP. But our goal is always to, to meet the, the services listed on the IEP to the greatest extent possible.
Thank you. So we have Bobby Kelly for Concord Street. Has there been any emphasis or thought into starting the year with outdoor classrooms? I think you've addressed that, but if you want to elaborate a little more.
We've talked about outside spaces. We know here, we know in New England, the weather is a driver in that one, as is safety. So it has been considered and discussed. And I think there's still thought around, can they take classes outside at some points in times? And I think that's still likely to happen, but just not on a consistent basis to move a class outside.
Okay. Denise Walsh, fifty-one Acton Street. Can you explain what is happening for students on the Wednesday remote independent workday? Will that look like what the students experienced in the spring?
So nothing will look like what spring was. It'll probably be closer and if you, I mean, just at a high level, but specifically, no, it will not look like that. Teachers will, my, our thinking now is some of the, some of these staff will be able to check in with kids on those days. Because we have all day. Much of the professional development will get done, teachers will be able to be involved in revising, really thinking and learning about how to do remote learning. But there will still be check-ins with students and it will be a day that they are working more independently on activities on, I mean, it may be a day that the teachers know that they're not going to be checking in as much. So maybe if you're an English teacher, that's when you're assigning some reading. Because you don't have to do that together necessarily. So it starts to build some of that independence. And if you want to add on, Ms. Godet, you feel free. Okay.
I think the concept is exactly that. Yes, it will be more independent than it, than it will be on the other days, but we are looking at ways that we can provide some more staff support for students who are remote.
Next one, Maureen Mancini, thirteen Amory Ave. To address what Jen said, they are trying to have the teachers in K through eight, avoid having to teach in-person and online at the same time. So I guess I'm confused on who will be teaching the remote students and what kind of direction or teaching will be happening on the home days in the hybrid.
So that, the teaching and the support that would be happening there may be happening by a teacher, specialist teacher. So you'll notice on the home days, particularly in grades six, seven and eight, that we do have special classes, specialist classes that are meeting during that time. So the student could be engaged in one of those classes. There will be time available for students to complete core academic work in the morning. And that work could be facilitated either by a paraprofessional or a specialist teacher or another classroom teacher. One of the things that our specialist teachers are particularly excited about is the opportunity to create interdisciplinary learning experiences that will support the core content instruction. And so those are things that could be happening during those spaces as well.
Lindy Gear, twenty-eight McKinley Street. I believe that I heard a question earlier about how many probable cases of COVID would be at school? This is both an answer to that question and a public comment that I would like to have read. Johns Hopkins University COVID Center tracks this COVID cases county by county across the US. This data is two weeks old, so the number of COVID cases to expect at each of the three Maynard schools two weeks ago was one person at GM, one at Fowler and one at Maynard High School on day one of school at that time. Cases have gone up since then, so they will likely, they will likely update the model soon to account for higher numbers in counties. So, and she provided the link in the chat, which is only accessible to the hosts at this point, but I believe we can make that.
I can put that in, into the, for the public.
Yeah, if, if people want to see it, I think that's good. She goes on to say, as my sixteen-year-old daughter said, I'll take slightly different remote learning or a delay in my learning any day over a classmate or teacher's death. Thanks, Lindy. And then I have another comment from Con Ditto. Wouldn't it be better to start remote, move to hybrid when we know we can truly do it safely, rather than hope we are starting safely enough and then likely have an emergency shutdown? My first comment was actually a question intended only, oh, intended only for Jennifer about the calendar. That's why she sent it to you privately.
I apologize, Corn. I apologize.
Okay, so, but this question was meant for. So I don't know if.
What was the question?
Oh, wouldn't it be better to start remote, move to a hybrid when we know we can truly do it safely, rather than hope we are starting safely enough and then likely have an emergency shutdown?
I thought that was a comment.
No, the comment, the, that, the second part of that was the comment, she was referring to the comment that I read earlier from her about, about the, having the teacher, the evaluations, the parent-teacher conferences.
And I guess what I would say to that is we are taking all the evidence that we can, all the information that we can. And yes, health and safety is at the top of our, top of our list. Then academics, and then we sort of work our way down that priority list. Health and safety is first and foremost for both students, families and staff.
Mike Waldron, one twenty-eight, one twenty-eight Harvard Road in Stowe and the president of the MEA. I think there is a misconception on teacher instruction. I don't think they will be doing both. So I don't know if we need.
Revisit that, I think. I think that is, that is my, and I could be mistaken. I think that was my understanding at the high school level anyway, that some of the teachers wanted the option to be able to teach to the kids in front of them and have the remote kids tune in via Zoom to see the intro part of that lesson. I don't know that that was, I don't want to say that that was the mandate for all high school classes. I think some teachers wanted that option, at least at the most recent meeting I heard. But if somebody knows more recent information, because it changes often, feel free to add on to that.
Oh, and, and I think what, what I can say to that, because this came up this afternoon in the meeting as well. I will be going back to the instruction group tomorrow to clarify that piece. Because we have gone through multiple iterations of schedules, prioritization of different components of this. And so my understanding is what Mr. Ha's understanding is as well. But obviously, you know, we need to, we need to go back and make sure that there's clarity.
Okay. I just want to acknowledge the time. It's nine oh six. We've gone over the time allowed, but I think that these questions are important and we still have a few more. So if it is okay with the rest of the committee, I would like to extend this period at least for another twenty minutes.
I absolutely agree.
Okay, all right. So the next one we have is Amanda Ray, eight Paul Road. First, I know this is a difficult situation and appreciate how hard everyone is working. If a student has an assigned paraprofessional grades, in grade one, it's a two to one, on the remote day, will they have access to support? I would love to support my own son, but I will also be working. Thank you.
I think.
The two to one supports, how is that going to work?
On, in remote learning, I take it. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff before I say anything, because he's going to have good news on this one.
Well, if we have two students to the one paraprofessional, I'd like to find out, are both kids who normally would be assigned to the paraprofessional, are they both in a remote situation? For example, if we're in the, for example, if we're in the hybrid, one student's in, the other one's remote, we might need to look at who's going to provide that support, but absolutely, we would want to provide that level of support that's written in the IEP as, as much as possible.
Great. Thank you. Tiana Chase, thirty Acton Street. In regards to food insecurity, what are we doing about our remote and hybrid kits? So, and I think you talked about it, but if you want to.
I can reiterate. So if they're hybrid, they're coming into the building, so that's a little bit easier. And we've worked with our food company to be able to do, you know, a multitude of things. But specifically lunch would be a grab and go lunch that they could take home. If we're doing only remote, we've also talked with the food service company about, I wouldn't say door-to-door, because we have a lot of families and a lot of kids, but there is a way to run a loop and provide some food with those same boxed lunches and or have a pickup. They're very accommodating. So once we get some harder numbers, I think we'll be able to identify what's the best option for us in terms of food.
Kristen Ferraro, fifteen Fowler Street. I apologize if I missed this. If the district decides to start full remote, how does this impact the pre-K? Didn't see a sample schedule for that, so would they not be remote?
That's a good question. If we go full remote, everybody's remote. I don't know off the top of my head what that schedule looks like.
I would imagine in terms of this, that it would be more similar to the elementary schedule. I do know that our preschool team is incredibly diligent and has some really great ideas of how they can work with different, whether it be hybrid or remote. Well, actually, we weren't considering a hybrid for the preschool, but you know, the different safety requirements and things of that nature. So should the district choose to go fully remote, we will be looking at, looking at those, that component. But it would probably be similar to the elementary model.
Okay. I have another comment from Mike Waldron, one twenty-eight Harvard Road in Stowe. Teachers were told they would not be teaching both groups. I think there is a misconception of what type of instruction is going to be taking place.
So we'll bring that back to the high school team tomorrow to get some clarity, because again, part of this is, is trying to make sure that we're able to create structures that allow our professional educators to design instruction in ways that they think will be successful. So again, if there, if there was confusion on my part about what that would mean for the high school schedule, we will clarify that component. And, and we will get back there in that capacity. I, I do know that the, the priority for the high school team was to preserve as much as possible the FaceTime with the program of studies that we have. So that is the priority of how, why it was designed the way it was in terms of delivery of instruction. Again, we will get some clarity on that and we'll bring it to the, back to the high school team tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, um, I don't have any more questions in the queue. If someone has written a question that I haven't read, please like send me a message, because I think I've read them all, but I'm not positive. There's a lot on here for me to scroll through. And if there are any more questions, please submit them now. I'm going to leave, I'm going to wait one more minute to see if anyone has anything. And if not, we are going to end this part of this meeting. And yeah, Mary, do it.
Okay for us to ask questions?
Absolutely.
And it may not be one that can be answered, but so if we were to decide to start totally remote, Brian, what would create the situation that we would then go to hybrid? I'm assuming we wouldn't go right to, totally in person. What, what would need to be in place for us, for everybody to feel safe enough to, to go hybrid?
I think that's the metric that everybody's waiting for. So that's a great question. And I think we've around the state, from the Board of Health, from superintendents, from teachers, from, everybody's asking that exact question and it sort of goes either way. If we opened hybrid, what would get us to go remote? If we open remote, what gets us back in school? And I think we're really waiting on that metric to say, if one person in the community has it, is that enough not to have school? And I, I think the answer honestly is, we don't know right now.
Okay, yeah. Difficult question to answer. Thank you.
Natasha.
I'm going to preserve my questions for when we're deliberating amongst ourselves and voting on it, but I did have a question about the anticipated survey that will be going out to families. I wondered if that survey could include questions for families who are considering unenrolling or homeschooling? A section that might allow them to explain why they're choosing to do that? If that's something that they feel that the remote plan does not sufficiently meet their needs and what, what type of capacity? I think it would be important to gather that feedback as, as families are making these decisions. So that, that would, that would be my only thought as we're planning for the next week to try to capture that, because. Because obviously, that does have broader implications besides just the immediate. That really impacts next year as well. And so if we can incorporate what those families feel like, why our remote plan wouldn't meet their needs, I'd really like to hear about that.
We can add that to the survey.
Um, I have one more question, unless Jess or Mary, did you have anything else? Okay, alright, um, Amy Price, sixteen Allen Drive. How is real-time instruction going to work? In the spring, my son could turn off his screen and play on his phone. Could we please require students to have their screens on and engage in the real-time instruction?
Yeah, so that's a great, and I don't know for Ms. Price what age her student is, but, but it sounds like maybe middle school or high school. And, and certainly those students know how to not pay attention very well. They practice it a lot. So, and that's something that our teachers deal with when they're in the face-to-face setting. When it is remote instruction, it can obviously be more challenging. So there's a couple of strategies that we're using, the professional development that we will be targeting around blended learning. Would again, create instructional. Create instructional experiences or learning experiences where the student is actively engaged in the learning. Thus, in theory, preventing them from just being able to tune out and, and put their phone on. And again, any high school teacher will know that, that, that theoretical part happens more often than we, we probably would like. The other component that we are looking at particularly for younger learners, but this is true at the high school and the middle school level as well, is how can we utilize small group instruction rather than whole group instruction? It's a whole lot easier if you're in a Zoom call of twenty people to stop paying attention and not be called out on it or not, not be made aware of it, rather than in a group of three or five. So we'll be looking at ways that we can provide that smaller interactive experience. The other component of this is that there are ways of, you know, other than just participating in a call the way we are now and people are talking. There are other things that teachers can design, and our technology director, this is his area of expertise. But there's other ways that they can design instruction so that students are having to interact with a separate application in addition to paying attention to what's happening on the screen. Again, sort of just promoting that active engagement component. So that'll be a lot of the work that our teachers will be doing. Frankly, whether we're in the remote-only model or whether we're in the hybrid model, to make sure that our kids can stay engaged. That's a great question.
I just had a quick thought. I mean, what if you put Easter eggs? You know how in video games, there are various Easter eggs? Like, what if we had Easter eggs and throughout the period? And if you collect all the Easter eggs by the end of the class, you get bonus points for, you know, I don't know, anyway.
That's a strategy, is gamification of learning. And, and so you're on point, Lydia, right, right with that, absolutely.
I think that, um, it was funny actually, because I was talking to some, some teacher friends. And last week, an article came out, and I read some places on social media about Bitmoji classrooms. And how that is basically, there's integrating with Google, I think Google as well. With Canvas and teachers have a, who are creating these like avatars of themselves in a classroom. So it's a lot more engaging than just a whole bunch of folders. So I thought, I just thought it was really cute. I mean, obviously, I don't think the high school owners might find it as cutesy. I don't know, I guess it depends on how your classroom is set up, maybe a concert or whatever, I don't know. But I, I just thought it was really like another one of those things, a strategy that might help a little bit more. And I think also, you know, my, my, my younger daughter's at a district for, for special education pieces. But one thing that I know, a lot of the etiquette, the remote etiquette, is, has to be learned, you know. And what, what worked well for her class, it was smaller. But every day they posted a slide of all they read, you know, the rules for the classroom. And it just kind of, you know, trained and reinforced that. And so after a certain time, they kind of got used to the same thing. So it wasn't that, it was just the parents saying it, you know, or it only, only saw it one time in the beginning. And it was just daily reinforcement of, these are the rules. And so it became really second nature. So that was helpful, I thought, as well. But it, it takes time, for sure.
Um, okay, I have a couple more questions, unless Jess, did you have something?
I had a, a quick question about how, just going back to your reference to small group versus whole group. How are we going to create those cohorts of children for those small groups? Is it gonna be based on teacher assessments, parent input? Particular skill sets, I mean, do you have any insight you can provide into how, how you're thinking of create cohorts?
Um, so do you mean the A and B cohort, or do you, for the remote, for the hybrid learning, or do you mean those smaller group online?
I think kind of all of it. Like, are we gonna be, get creative and say like, hey, listen, like, we have these six kids who are all, have the same learning deficit that we can kind of group them together and, you know, dive in deeper to get them, what, it could actually be a really beautiful silver lining to all of this, right? Like, if you could create these small groups and, and really individualize. So are we gonna take advantage of that in either model? And not just go by last name or whatnot, and really use this as a small district? We could use this to our advantage in either setting. So I'm just curious if there's been any thought into that.
Yes, absolutely. So the first, let me address the hybrid cohorts. Because the prioritization there is in terms of families. And so we wanted to make sure, you know, there will be a starting point, you know, whether it's alphabetical or, or some iteration thereof. But then making sure that if you are a family that, that spans different buildings or different grade levels, that your students are in the same cohort together, makes some sense. And that would be sort of, you know, sort of first priority there. We have thought a lot about how we can take advantage of these smaller groups to do some flexible grouping and to do some models like that. So, you know, once we get, if, whether we're in a hybrid or remote type situation. Once we get sort of the, the first logistical part of making sure families are taken care of together and, and those scheduling components can work out, then it's okay. How do we take advantage, exactly as you said, of this opportunity to do flexible grouping? And those groupings could be designed in any number of ways, and you mentioned most of them. It could be based off of an assessment that's done of a particular unit or a particular skill, where the students are not just within one cohort, but they're mixed with other groups of students. It could be that there are students who are in different, you know, a student who's in the remote only and a student who's in the hybrid model that really work well together for whatever reason. And so we're gonna create an opportunity for those students to meet with a staff member or teacher during a remote day. There, you know, Mr. Ferranti mentioned, there is a question about if my student has a two-to-one paraprofessional or MBA support. Obviously, where, where we are able to, if we have those students who we can provide services together. That's gonna be something that we're gonna be able to do. So it, it's not a simple answer as to how we're gonna design the cohorts, because we're really trying to be as creative as possible to get the most benefit out of this opportunity. I, I know we're talking a lot about the challenges, and believe me, there, there are challenges in what we're doing. There's also a lot of opportunity. And, you know, if I could just, Natasha, on the parts that you were mentioning about the teachers, you know, friends that you're talking to. One of the things that is most inspiring to me over the course of the last, you know, several months since March is the innovation. And we, we know our teachers are innovative. We know teachers in general are thoughtful people. But the innovation and the mindset with which our educators, I know the ones in Maynard, so I'm gonna speak to the ones in Maynard, are, are bringing to the table. And the ways that they are thinking about, how can I do something differently so that it benefits my student? And what, what we want to do at a district level is to create the structure, create the support so that we can then get out of their way and allow them to do what they do best, which is inspire our students and give them the training that they need to do that. So, believe me that they are having those conversations. They are excited about some of these elements. They're nervous. I think, dare I say, that they're scared about what this might look like. But they are, they are the people you want teaching your children all of the times, and they are the people you want teaching your children now.
Jennifer, a question on that piece, is that, are you thinking, because I know I've heard this a little bit in, in other places, and actually some other teachers. And, and even in other states, about multi-grade, just to kind of meet that need where their skill levels might be similar to kind of just what Jessica's talking about. So if you have a kid who's, like, math, you know, is different, so is that some of the conversation that is potentially happening as well? So you might have multiple grade cohorts that kind of be, I guess in a remote way differentiated learning. And, and that way, because that, that, I mean, I think that is a good possibility. Again, you know, my own personal experience, I know that works very well in the, in a lot of the special education areas. Because you do have some kids who excel well, you know, cognitively in one subject and then might need more help and support in another subject that might not be necessarily grade level. So that, you know, I, I think it is creative out of the box thinking. It doesn't obviously go well with our conventional learning model. So I think, I, I do applaud those conversations that are happening, because it does take a lot of, you know, it does take some risk-taking, right? Because it's, there's no really platform or model for that. And if, if there's an opportunity to even pilot that in some way, I would really, I would like to hear about that at some point. Because I, I think that, that really gets to the student achievement in the best way that, that we can support our, our kids. And I'm glad teachers are, you know, I know that the teachers really, really want the best of that as well, so. Oh, especially, uh, Spanish immersion, I'm sorry. Did you talk about Spanish immersion? Because I, I, I can't remember where I heard this. I've been, I was listening to the parent session earlier, and I don't remember if that was covered here or.
We've spoken about Spanish immersion, but really, it's going to function very similarly to whatever is happening with the other cohorts as well. There will be a remote Spanish immersion, we believe, based on the numbers that we have been hearing. If we choose to do hybrid, the families that will select remote. So if, if that is a choice you would prefer to make, if you were in the Spanish immersion, when you get the survey, please, please do select that remote component. And similarly, in the hybrid model, if we are back in the hybrid model, it will function very similarly to the other classes. Obviously, there is a bit of a difference in that, particularly at the early grades. This is their first exposure, because most of our students are non-native Spanish speakers. This is their first exposure to the language. And so one of the things that Mr. Rulo and Mr. Barth and the Spanish immersion teachers are working on is how do we capitalize on the ability to provide Spanish language exposure? What are some of the other models we might use? What are some applications? What are some things we can do for families at home?
Thank you, sorry, thank you.
Okay, a couple more questions. Again, Amanda Ray, eight Paul Road. When we respond to our preferences for remote only slash hybrid, if hybrid is selected, will we be given any flexibility and time to consider? Because I am also trying to figure out my own work schedule. Thanks again.
Yes, but we'd like you to fill it out quickly so that we can get some basic numbers to make some decisions, but, yes.
But there's flexibility, okay. And, um. She has a second part to that question. What kind of support is going to be provided to the teachers to switch to an online learning platform?
So I guess that, the, the question I would have, I can answer it the way I think it's being asked. And if this is not what is being asked, please, please clarify. So the, the, we are not, as of right now, adopting what is known as an LMS, a learning management system, different from what we've been using, which is Google Classroom. So we will be using Google Classroom as the predominant platform. And Google Meet right now is the predominant meeting structure and the apps associated with that. And so our teachers have become familiar with it. We will continue to provide professional development. We also did purchase an enterprise license, which all folks need to know is that essentially that gives us better features for the Google Meet in regards to noise cancellation and, and some other components of Google Classroom that are easier to use. So we did get sort of the premium version of, of that product, if you will. So we'll be training teachers on that component. If the question is around instructing in an online way and the instructional strategies that folks need to use when they are teaching online or not, not teaching in a face-to-face component, that's the professional development. And probably the, the easiest, if folks want to sort of research this on their own, if you Google blended learning. Or flip classroom or those sorts of things, those, those are some of the best ways that you can get a sense of what kinds of strategies we're talking about here. And we will be providing professional development for our teachers and our paraprofessionals on, on how to use those instructional strategies to promote student learning.
Thank you. Yeah, Jess.
Just in connection with that, I think you mentioned earlier too, there may be some training for parents as well.
Yes, yep, absolutely. So the, the Innovative Learning Committee and the Instruction Committee are designing, you know, what are the professional, professional development for parent development for families to be able to better support students in using those tools as well, and training for students. And that, that's another component, is how are we giving them access to be able to sign on and learn how to do this independently?
Last question, Maureen Mancini, thirteen Amory Ave. Are there teachers who will be just teaching remotely? Are there enough teachers to do this, especially thinking of the high school? I'm imagining there aren't multiple teachers for each subject in each grade level. So if they aren't using both methods, how will students actually get FaceTime with teachers?
So I think, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Teachers, we have, they, well, teachers will be teaching remotely. I'm not sure the question, there's not enough teachers?
Are there teachers who will be teaching just remotely? Like, are there some teachers who, e- even if we do hybrid?
Yes.
Who are just doing remote, but what if they teach us a specific subject that kids who are doing the hybrid want to take? But that teacher isn't teaching in the hybrid model, will we have a teacher in person? For the, I, I believe that's what she's asking.
So I think the answer is we're still working on some of those details, particularly as it relates to the secondary schedule or the high school schedule specifically. We need to get, you know, if we are going back in a hybrid model, we need to get numbers of students who are remote. We need to look at their schedules to see what courses they are, they are taking. And figure out, a- a- and do the, the staffing component of how, which of our staff are, will be teaching remotely or need to be working remotely that we are able to provide that opportunity for, if, if in fact we can. So it's really, it's a, it's, it's a math problem, if you will, of trying to put those two different pieces together kind of like Tetris, to, to line some components up. And once we get better numbers, we can say that. What I will say is, again, we are looking to preserve two things. One, Maynard teachers teaching Maynard students, so that is the first priority, is to make sure that all students have access to our Maynard teachers. And two, we are looking at the secondary level to preserve their program of studies. So if a student wants access or needs access to a particular course, and let's just say worst-case scenario, there is not a way that we can have a Maynard teacher teaching that course within the schedule. There are other, are other avenues we can go down. We, as a district, have been a member of virtual high school for a long time, so that is one. There are also courses that are being put out by two different vendors, and I'm blanking on the names of them right now, that the state contracted with. And again, we'll be putting information about that up on our website. Where the district can purchase either individual courses or sets of courses for students that will be facilitated not by Maynard teachers, but by other teachers virtually. So we will be looking to, to use as many creative ways as we can to make sure students are provided the schedules that they need.
Were these, Jen, the ones you just mentioned, are these the GCVS and the TECA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So the state contracted with those two organizations to, so that districts can purchase either individual courses or, or sets of courses for remote instruction.
Okay, and are we going to definitely be utilizing those? Or how will, how will people know if those are gonna be offered?
So based, right now, we got this information Wednesday. And so we sent it, and I only say that just so folks, so folks know why we don't have answers directly to this. So we've been waiting on this information from the state. We did get it Wednesday. Sent it out to the Innovative Learning Committee and to the Instructional Task Force. Asked them to take a look at it to determine, you know, what, what they thought of these products. Again, these are reputable organizations, and, and so we believe that they will be high-quality instruction. But based on our early conversations, it seemed as though, for the most part, we would be able to keep students whole in their courses using Maynard, Maynard teachers, Maynard teachers teaching Maynard students. And so we would really only be using these organizations if there was a situation where a student was unable to be in that class, which we thought would be very rare. Or if there was a situation in which a student was not being successful by following, you know, assuming we're following the high school schedule in the way that it was illustrated, that's not working out for a student. That's an opportunity that we have where we can provide. That's an opportunity that we have where we can provide an alternative so that they can do something that, that works better for their learning.
Okay. Can we provide information on the website or links about the GCVS and the TECA?
Yeah, we'll put that up on the website. We just didn't get to it today. But yes, we will put that up on the website so that folks can see those.
Okay. So a follow-up question is, what I don't understand is if the teacher's teaching the hybrid kids four days a week and having one professional development day, who is teaching the remote kids?
If we're in a hybrid model? So that would be where we're using some of these distance learning strategies, where students are working independently. They may have tasks that they need to complete. Mr. Haas mentioned reading. Flipped classroom is one of the strategies that is utilized in this way so that when students are home, they're doing some learning acquisition and then applying it when they get in, in front of a teacher. But again, one of the things we learned from the spring is that all of our students, when they are home, could really benefit from additional support from our staff. And so we'll be looking for ways that we can schedule either small group sessions or other things happening, either by other teachers or by other staff members who are not providing that direct instruction for the in-person courses.
Okay. Um. Okay, so, all right. I just got a slew of questions. All right, so first of all, can we put on the chat for everyone the information for the next two Zoom sessions with the parents so that people can go there? Because I think that this has just opened up a larger conversation.
Sure. Colleen, do you have that? Can you throw that in there?
There's, there's still some.
There's only one. I'll put it up.
Yeah, okay. Oh, there's only one? Is that the one on Tuesday or Monday?
On Monday, Monday.
Okay, Monday. So there's still some confusion around, so remote-only kids, will they be getting live teaching?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I think that's what it sounded like. I had through gathering the little breadcrumbs through all the different responses that we've had. So the, up until maybe it was eighth grade, that they would have potentially the teacher doing, could be doing remote and live instruction at the same time. But then you're going to circle back to the high school. Because that's.
Yeah, it's the opposite. So through eighth grade, if you are remote only, you have a teacher who is, is teaching that cohort of remote-only students. At the high school, we will circle back on, on how that's going to work because, because of that. So through, through eighth grade, if you are a remote-only student, you will have a teacher that is responsible for teaching you. At the elementary level, it will likely be a teacher who is teaching you all of the content pieces similar to your peers. If you are in grade six, seven, and eight, it will be the grade-level teacher of that subject area. But they will be assigned a block where they are teaching only the remote students in math or English, et cetera. So through eighth grade, that's how that piece will work. Yes, there will be live instruction. No, we are not expecting or wanting students to be sitting at a computer for five hours, six hours of a day. So part of designing that instruction will be to make sure that we're able to provide opportunities for, for learning outside of the screen time.
Okay. Um. Okay, so. Thank you, Colleen. All right, so. We're running out of time. I have two quick ones. One, I don't even know if we can answer. I think it might need to go to Nanda. But Amy Parquette of 48 Orchard Drive in Stowe, who I assume is a para or an ABA. Is there going to be a meeting for para/ABAs before we enter the building?
There'll be a meeting for all staff.
There'll be a meeting for all staff. Okay, and then the last one. Alex Waldron, 128 Harvard Road, Stowe, has children in the Maynard school system and her husband is president of the MEA. If a student is supposed to be, or was supposed to be taking Algebra I in grade eight, but now that will not be offered due to the cohorts being set up the way you have explained in your plan, is there a way to sign up our child to take Algebra I as a dual enrollment type thing in this TECA or virtual high school?
Yeah, so we're, that's a conversation. Again, Algebra I curriculum is available to our students, whether, whether you do it in this model or not. That was not something we were ever taking away. But one of the things that we do have the ability to do is exactly as she is suggesting, which is the students can enroll in a Algebra I course through TECA or the other program. And that's something we're exploring, how we do that.
Okay.
And how we, when I say how we do it, I mean, how do we schedule it for the student so that they're able to do the other components as well?
All right, excellent. If anyone has any further questions, you can direct them to whichever person you feel is most appropriate.
Do we have that, that email address about the reopening? That might be helpful to, I don't know if that, was that included in the, the plan somewhere?
There's an email address that we created for reopening questions specifically. I'll see if I can, that was sent out earlier in the spring. I will see if I can find it.
That might be good to put in the chat for everybody.
Yep. I agree.
And also, it'd be good for us to give to people when people ask us questions too, because.
I didn't even know it existed.
I had heard.
Remember where we. Let me look to see if I can find, it may take a moment. We may need to send it out to folks tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember which communication it was in. I'll find it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your contributions. Thank you, Brian, for your presentation and Jennifer and Jeff for weighing in on everything. This has been a complex and convoluted process. And I, I spent today in the school with all this craziness going on, and I'm exhausted. I can't imagine what it has been like for you guys for the past several weeks, months, whatever. And I will tell you, parents, if you're out there and you're mad about the situation we're in, Commissioner Riley, the Commissioner of Education, is the person you should be directing your anger at because he has dropped the ball on all of us and has forced us into a situation that none of us should be in. And it is not fair to us, it's not fair to our children. And he has done a despicable job. So if you are feeling like you want to write some nasty grams to someone, he's the person who needs to get them. All right, thank you. That being said, we are going on to the out-of-state field trip vote.
Seems a little anticlimactic at this point. But I think it's important because this year there is the potential for an out-of-state field trip, which Maynard does every, I think, four years to Florida. It's a great trip. But last year, when things got canceled late, many trips, people lost a lot of money because they were non-refundable. Given COVID and where we're at in terms of travel right now, my recommendation is to cancel out-of-state field trips so that nobody's in the situation of putting down a non-refundable deposit now, when I don't have a good feeling that this is going to happen. We can always come back if, as we said, you know, we go back to school like normal and everything's cleaned up by January, we can certainly revise that policy. But I think this protects the parents.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know there's, actually, you just kind of touched on it. There's actually a policy on it. And I wonder if we should be rescinding the policy?
We, we addressed it today. We're, we're taking care of it. And it will be, it's going to be, yes, it's, it's being addressed. And so we will deal with that at the next regular school committee meeting.
Okay, so we'll see, that'll be, I know there's like a.
Yeah, this is just addressing the Florida field trip because they have to start making plans now. And so if we vote to not allow it, then they don't need to worry about making plans. The field trip policy is the broad overarching field trip policy, and that doesn't have to be done today.
Okay, yeah, this is more than just the, this is not just Florida. That's why, I don't know, I just was thinking that it was.
Not just Florida.
The, what we're asking, the recommendation, to cancel all out-of-state sponsored field trips, right? That's what we're doing, not just canceling Florida.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can revisit it if things change.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think this is a no-brainer.
It is, yeah.
I will make a motion that we accept the recommendation to cancel or, do we say temporarily rescind out-of-state field, or I don't know how to properly, because this is for the out-of-state. I'm a little tired, so let's go back. Okay. So I will make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to cancel out-of-state field trips or not schedule out-of-state field trips for the 2020, 2021 school year. That make sense at all?
Yep, and I'll second it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Yep, I will.
All righty, let's vote. Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Mary Ranely.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. That passes, and guess what? We're done for tonight. So, um, we, I think, with the exception, I can't remember who's not available next Tuesday morning. I think it might be Beth Lynn, not positive. So I will see all of you then, but I will send out an email to bring you up to date.
We have members' comments.
Oh, my goodness, you're right, we do. So I take it back, we're not done. All righty then, I'm so tired. Okay, so let's start with the budget subcommittee and tell us all about your fun adventures.
You want to take this one, Natasha?
Um, yeah, I guess, hold on, let me have my notes there. It was a bit of a doozy. So like scroll back there. So basically, we received update that the governor was not going to reduce Chapter 70 funding or stated funding, which seemed great. But then with, at the town level, we're still short receipts that are coming in for, for, for our town budget. So initially, Mary, I know Mary, you and Lydia had presented the, where we would project it to be a $900,000 shortage. Now it is more of a $402,000 shortage, which that would be with the 60-40 split that we've talked about would still be $265,000 and $422 that the school needs to deliberate on, that the town is asking the schools to cut from our FY21 budget, which would then be presented at town meeting. So that, there's conversations about that.
If I could just interject, so when we originally had the $900,000, it was going to have to be split. The selectmen had decided that half of that was going to come out of the general stabilization fund. And so we were still going to, you know, just have to deal with the half. But when the governor came back and said that he's going to keep it the same, it still, it took away the pot of the money being taken from general stabilization. They basically left it that it's still the same. It means the same thing for us. So that's the conversation.
Right, right. And I think that was also before we had discussions on understanding the impact of what we're experiencing in increased costs, which again, needs to, and so it does sound very doom and gloom and it is very, you know, not very great news. The two things I wanted to just touch on or add here that were, so this is very conservative planning. So Mike Guzzo, our, our town director of counting, he, he did look at the numbers recently and said that the projections were still in line. So I did ask that at our meeting because I was hoping that it's like, oh, no, receipts are kind of going up. But, so that was not the really great part. But the two things that could impact our town deficit would be growth. So revenue that comes in that hasn't been forecasted. So potentially 129 Parker Street, those things. Also marijuana tax that hasn't been incorporated. So the town will receive eventually at some point, when that becomes online, a 3% marijuana tax. And so I asked our Greg Johnson about that and, and he indicated he thought it would be helpful that we have a separate meeting specifically that talks about the dispersment of, of that because it has not been decided yet. And I think that would be helpful to think about. So, but when that happens is unknown. So we can't really count on that in, in our budget considerations, which is unfortunate. And so, and the other part was looking at the Wi-Fi piece for, that was a capital project, that they were looking at the articles to approve. And there was a $72,000 Wi-Fi. I think they, our tri-board meeting, it was indication that maybe it could be looked to the CARES Act. Lydia, yeah?
I have an update on that that I got while I was in the office today. And I can either update you now or I can send it in an email later. But basically, what it comes down to is, we will get, what is it called, the E-rate or the E, the E-rate? So we will get reimbursed 50% of that $72,000, but it has to be done before September of 2021. And we don't know what our finances, our finances are going to be worse in '22. So, and we need, we need the upgrade. So we could put it off a year, but there's really, there's probably less of a chance we can afford it in '22, FY22. So we really should go ahead and do it in FY21. So I think we're going to leave the Wi-Fi enhancement where it is.
Okay, so it, it sounds like that recommendation, I think Greg was wanting to know that, that we're not going to be able to fund it elsewhere. So the full amount will still need to be banked on for a capital project, is what I'm hearing.
Right, because we were, it was already, if, if we hadn't already had it in the works, it's possible the CARE Act, CARES Act money would cover it. But because it was already a pre-existing condition, if you will, it cannot be covered by the CARES Act.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because we haven't done anything with it yet. So it's not really, like, it was no funding that was really set aside for it yet. So I don't know how that would be.
It was already being planned.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. So that, yeah, so I think that would be just Greg understanding that piece. And then the next meeting is, let me just make sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, the MSBA feasibility study. So the Board of Selectmen did approve $1 million. I think this is one reason why they kind of pushed away from taking the general stabilization to cover the shortcomings of the operational cost, is because they did, they're going to take the full $1 million out of general stabilization. And so that will lessen the financial impact to residents where there's no debt exclusion that will be necessary by a second action vote, which could potentially fail in November. So the recommendation, which, and also, if it comes in lower, then obviously the town pays less. But with, when you do have a debt exclusion, you don't, you're not able to provide that relief to the town once it's approved. So they were very sensitive to the impact to the folks' pocket. And it also, just the fire station looks like it's going forward as well on the fall. So a lot of decisions for our town folk to be thinking about. A lot of capital projects there.
And there was also a conversation about the water.
Yeah, I was going to say, what happened with water and sewer?
Everything is a priority. That's, that's a tough part.
Right, the thing to remember about the feasibility and that we need to keep telling people is that it's anticipated that we'll receive 50% back from the MSBA. So we'll back into the general stabilization.
And the other part too, which was really great, which is really important to know because there's, there has been some talk about, you know, not going forward with it and then we would fall, we would lose our place in accepting the program. There is no guarantee. We'd have to submit several years of statements of interest again. And considering what's happening right now in our current environment with people working remotely and building and air quality and all these things that are coming to light with the health of buildings, and considering the state will have shortfall in their budgeting, their, the, the expected acceptance back into the program could be, you know, I don't. acceptance back into the program, it could be, you know, I don't know, maybe never at this point, 10 years down the road potentially, it's really unknown. And I think it's, obviously, it's more of a risk, um, where the town or residents would have to incur millions of dollars to, you know, gr- bring Green Meadow up to a standard, which really isn't what a, a new building or renovated building would, would do. So, um, but it was, it was great that there was here the conversations. Um, I don't know, Mary, if you, you agree, that was really, really great conversations. Um, I think the only other thing that I wanted to add, um, was, I, I saw today that there was some momentum or conversations about a potential bill, um, to impose a four-year moratorium on the MCAS, um, that there's a public hearing on that, um, August 10th for a bill, and it looks like, um, I don't know if there's information, Jennifer or, or Brian, if you hadn't heard any information about this, but it looks like the education committee will be accepting testimony via email up until Monday, August 10th, 5:00 PM, and that the House Chair, Alice P-E-I-S-C-H, and Chair Jason Lewis, um, will be receiving it. It's the education committee testimony for, I guess, Senate Bill 2814. Um, so I just thought that was interesting, to, you know, conversations, I don't know if anyone in the public, or if we are wanting to send our own advocate, you know, advocacy on, on that, that might be something to think about. Um, and I just, not, I just was hearing, uh, you guys did a fantastic job, the parent session, it's really been a marathon of talks since 3:00, um, you know, hearing that, and I, I really just appreciate the, the parent participation, the staff participation, you all just conveying all those details that are, some of it is still unknown. I mean, things change day-to-day. Um, so I, I, I think this is very helpful to have, and thank you, um, for really kind of walking through those things and continuously doing that. It's really what we, we need here. So, um, oh, and then we get to actually, um, have a webinar with Desi Commissioner on Tuesday. Um, so I know a couple of us, so Lydia can tell them off in person.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, um, so that's a possibility. I don't know if she'll get blocked out or kicked out, but-
I might, I might, they might preemptively block me after the, the question I submitted.
Yeah, maybe. Maybe your, your login might not work, so, um, but I, I think that will be interesting. I, I've heard a couple of anecdotes of comments that he's made recently about withholding, uh, funding, um, potentially for athletic, or if you don't do in person, I think it's a shame, um, that those kind of veiled passive-aggressive, um, tones are being, um, shared in such a crucial time when people need to be leading decisions and making decisions by health and safety, and not have to weigh, um, the risk or loss of funding to our, our district, um, as a consideration. So I think that's certainly not very happy about that, and that's my, probably my G-rated, um, response on feelings on that.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right. Um, so, Communication Subcommittee meeting is the first one, 9:00 to 10:00 AM on the 18th of August. Uh, Curriculum and Strategic Planning Subcommittee, do we have an update on that?
No, we haven't met yet.
Okay. Um, what about negotiations?
I think, Brian, you have to kick off the lead on that, because you, I think you're probably more in the trenches than I would, myself or Jessica would know, so.
We've started conversations with both the MEA and the MESA, um, related to fall reopening. They've been very initial conversations at this point.
Great.
So we can, as we continue, we'll have more meetings, fill you in.
More meetings, every day. Fill in the meetings.
We'll have more meetings on this one. I think that will really sort of take form once we decide on the model.
Yeah, I think that makes, makes perfect sense, so we're not exploiting our wheels or energy on things that we shouldn't be considering.
Exactly.
Okay. And then Policy Subcommittee. Mary, do you want to do the rundown?
Oy vey. How many policies did we go through today?
Uh, it's, uh, I didn't count, but it's like 42.
Yeah, so to your point, um, Natasha, um, Lydia pretty much pulled out that many policies that are going to potentially have to be adapted to our fall opening, um, with the hybrid and/or the remote, um, learning and how they're going to play in. So we'll be working on those, um, as well as Colleen. Colleen is taking some of them also, so we're sort of splitting them up, so, like, Colleen doesn't have that, enough to do right now, but, uh, but anyway, so yeah, so we'll have, we'll have a lot for you.
You think we will need to have a separate meeting just for policy, like a special, it sounds like, I wonder if we should, like, because there's so many things, I feel like that takes so much time and energy.
We, yeah, we've already discussed that, and so in order for us to vote on the 20th, we would have to have a, a meeting just for policies prior to that. Um, and-
We're going to have-
The policy, Subcommittee has to have another meeting before we have the full school committee policy meeting prior to the vote on the 20th. Does that make sense? Did you follow that?
Uh, kind of. Um, I wonder if-
We're reviewing and amending, and then Policy Subcommittee is getting back together. We are finalizing it all so that we can present it to the school committee, to read them all for the first read, and then the second read in the vote would be on the 20th. If we can manage to do that, if, you know, who knows, something might blow up before then, and we'll have to like, that'll draw our attention, so, you know, you don't-
Let's, yeah, yeah, that sounds crazy, and that reminds me of when Jennifer talked about an asteroid that might hit Maynard, and like, literally that weekend, something happened in the sky, so.
Um, all right. Any other updates that anyone wants to move up?
Want me to talk about the safety, the safety committee?
Oh, yes, please, yes, please.
Brian and I were at the safety, um, meeting this morning, and again, so much of our staff, like Brian has said, and Jennifer has said, um, our staff is not getting a summer vacation. They are working non-stop on different, you know, you find same people on different committees, they are just amazing, but, um, so, and, um, Charles Gabron is, is spearheading, um, that, that committee. So we basically just went through, they, the fact that there was the extended school year program, the SAMA has helped, because they could do sort of a little, a minor pilot, knowing that it's a one-to-one, um, ratio and that, but at least, um, the nurses were very, have been very much involved. The, um, Fire Chief has been very much involved in that. So again, it's a pilot, it's a small-running pilot. And then we talked about, um, each one of the schools went through and was talking about things like, you know, how the students are going to come in, in the morning, um, the one-way, you know, one-ways in the hallways, and the, the stairwells, and bathrooms, we asked about the bathrooms. Justin Dimakos has been great again about, um, you know, making sure that the bathrooms are working, um, at the Green Meadow and the Fowler, um, things of that nature. So we did, and we also had the Board of Health, we, we had Kelly there, which was great, and she, together with the Fire Chief, uh, Justin Dimakos, and Kyle Brained, are all going to be going through the schools, um, close to when the students are coming back, just to make sure that everything is okay. So we were really pleased that she was able to, um, make that meeting this morning.
I have one question. So if we're, if we do the remote, I mean, the hybrid model, and we're in the buildings, and we're trying to maintain safe distances, and how are fire alarm, fire drills, and ALICE drills going to work, or will we suspend those this year?
Well, legally, we're not going to be able to suspend fire drills.
Okay.
ALICE drills are a little more district-driven, um, and we haven't talked about suspending them. It may be that they look different.
Okay. All right, but is it part of the conversation? Like, how?
Conversation.
Okay, all right. Great. Okay.
If I remember correctly, one of the things that Justin had brought up, um, was about having the electrician come in, I forget, one of the schools, because the, um, fire exits weren't lighting up or something like that. So they're, they're working again really, really hard to, to cover all the bases.
Excellent. Um, does anyone, Jeff, do you have anything you want to add? Brian, is there anything you want to add?
No, I don't think anybody.
We all good? All right.
I think we're all toast.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Entertain a motion to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second? Anyone second?
I'll second.
All righty. Roll call vote. Uh, Mary Ranely?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Sayonara. Thank you. Very much.
Thank you, Brian.